Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for our Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, April 20, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we do have citizens today that will be speaking. Thank you so much for joining us. First, I want to recognize that we do have seven emails supporting saving Royal Park and not turning it into a parking lot. So I want to thank all those members of our community that have stepped up with that information. Then we have Charles Baer. Would you like to speak on transparency?
Hello, my name is Charles Baer. I'm from Redmond, Oregon. I'd like to thank the county commissioners for doing a great job. Thank you. I'd like to thank the county commissioners for giving me this time to speak. Thank you very much. I'd like to wish everybody a happy 2020. I had a couple ideas this year I'd like to share with you now. Idea number one is called KASH, K-A-S-H, and I think that it would be a good idea for the Deschutes County Commissioners to inform the state government in Oregon that they have decided either this year or next year to begin a program to create a cyber currency that would be owned entirely by the Oregon state government, and it would be 100% transparent and would be available to everybody. That was idea number one. Idea number two is also a very similar to idea number one. It's called VOTE, V-O-A-T, and I think that the Deschutes County Commissioners, it would be a good idea if they informed the state government of Oregon that they are beginning a program for voting online that is 100% transparent and completely owned by the Oregon state government and is available to everybody. So those are the ideas I thought were interesting, and thank you very much.
For joining us today. Rhonda, would you like to have your three minutes, please?
Thank you. I would like to continue a mention from last week about the issue that we have, about these lovely green bottles that are littering our landscape in central Oregon. I do believe that a solution is right in front of us. We just haven't had, for some reason, the motive yet. And if I just can recap, a couple of the moments, excuse me, a number of the issues surrounding this, is that I've been told that these are not legally recyclable or refillable. And for some reason, we're letting these in our county without a deposit program. And I've been interviewing for years on this subject out on the street. I've talked to a lot of people recently that have now are telling me stuff that's really disturbing. We know that these cleanups that we have from time to time net a lot of these things. Why? Because they use them and they drop them. They, whoever they are, we. We can't let this happen anymore. A few people have actually admitted to me when I, because I just came up with my first empty just recently. So I go, I don't want to throw this in the trash can. So what am I going to do with this? I've been holding on to this and holding on to this now for weeks, not knowing what to do with it. I've had people tell me that they have been putting these in a hole, in their favorite hole out there. And there, one person told me they had put about 150 of them. They know exactly where 150 of them are right now. So let me just quickly tell you a story. I heard a rumor, I don't know if it's true, but I like the story, that a tobacco company focused on a city, I don't know what the city or the tobacco company, and they put a bounty on cigarettes, cigarette butts. Can you imagine what the activity was that followed when you put, when you do that? And I am suggesting that Deschutes County Commission find a way for some of this money that I see you guys give away every meeting, there's got to be, I don't, I'm ignorant. I don't know how to, how to go through the application process. I don't know if I as a person can apply for some of this money. I don't know if I need to find organizations out there who give these away to become program receipts and have, give them the money so they can pay on the street for the return of these things. Please, I'm begging you guys to start some kind of program to make this work and happen now. Thank you very much.
Dave, could I ask him to, if he would give me that?
A bottle?
Yeah.
Sure, if you want.
Yeah. Rhonda, do you mind just giving it to me and then I will?
There you go.
Well, I will.
That's getting it done right there.
Since I've recycled my whole bloody life, and I will see what we can do to make that. Anyway, thank you so much.
There are, there are issues with recycling those because they, in some cases, they might still contain propane in them, and that's explosive.
Okay. Well, we need to get to the bottom of it.
Something that I would mention to Rhonda is that this is not a state or federal sanctioned activity, but there are, on the internet, there's widely available devices to hook up to a 40-gallon propane tank and refill those. Yeah. That, that, that's not the equivalent of a, of a, you know, comprehensive governmental program that would probably be most appropriate to pursue at the state level. But just, just if you're wondering about what you're going to do with your own individual empty containers, there's some information for you.
I may have one at my house, so this will be good for me to do something about it. And Michael, not, would you like to come and have your three minutes, please? Thank you so much. Oh, I'm so sorry. I know if I said, Michelle.
You're one of the million people who made the same mistake.
That's not the first time.
Michelle, okay.
Good morning. Thank you for, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. On February 23, over 30 of our neighbors, the Huns, were in this room asking you to have an open meeting with you and Chris Dodi of the County Road Department to talk about the Hahnville Road Improvement Project. So far, we have received no response to our request. We have been speaking to you on several occasions, as you know, in this room, and were even told by you, Commissioner DeBonne, that you wanted to keep working with the Huns. We are not opposed to improvement project for Hahnville Road, but we are opposed to the current design of the County Road Department. What we are requesting is a design that will prevent Hahnville Road from becoming a high-speed cut through, limit the impact on properties, and preserve the recreation quality of Hahnville Road and the character of this neighborhood. We have sent you a document that compares our design, the Huns' design, to that of the county. That, that document was also used to do a survey sent to the whole neighborhood. We have heard comments over the last year and a half or two years that the Huns don't really represent the whole neighborhood, and that came from different, different sources I can name to you, but I won't. At this point, I'm going to give you the response to this. The survey returned this pile of letters saying they support the county or department and about the other half saying they don't, it doesn't make any difference to them. This is the response from the neighborhood, 152 of them, saying they strongly oppose the design of the County Road Department and support the design that the Huns came up, that came up with. So if anybody tells you that the Huns do not represent the whole neighborhood, they are not telling you the truth. As Deschutes County and the city of Ben-Gro, there is a strong preference to develop complete communities with easy access to services and recreation amenities. In such communities, residents will be able to shop and recreate without using their cars and instead walk and bicycle. The Hahnville Neighborhood is such a community and has been for many years, many decades, really. Hahnville Road is our recreation corridor. Thus, residents can recreate on Hahnville Road without having to use their car to get to a faraway park. We have been documenting recreation activity on this road using trail camera. The County Road Department design will absolutely kill the complete community aspect of our neighborhood. We are very dismayed by the total lack of attention you and the County Road Department have recently shown to our concern. It is like we do not exist. You could at least give, have the courtesy to respond to a request of February 23, requesting a meeting, open meeting with you and the County Road Department. Are you going to ignore a precious neighborhood, an incredibly exceptional area enjoyed by many residents, that many more residents than just the Hahnville Neighborhood residents, with some residents coming from areas several miles away? If you're going to ignore us, we plan to make our concern much more public than we have so far. Thank you for listening.
No. Michelle, thank you so much for coming today. I know that I've been out there several times. Probably COVID wasn't really the best thing that could have happened to the engagement between us and, between your community and the Road Department and the commissioners. So I appreciate you coming again today.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'd just like to say that I am, I am sorry that we live in one of the fastest-growing communities in, in the state and the nation, and that that growth has arrived at your doorstep.
That, that really has really nothing to do with it. We don't request a lot of different things. We are asking, we are not asking for very much. If you compare the designs by the, by the Road Department and our design, there are a few additions that are essential to us that do not involve huge amount of funding, if any, like reducing the speed limit. It's no, no, no. We won't stand for it.
I do feel that the Road Department made sincere efforts to incorporate some of your concerns into the design.
After that, did you stop talking to us and ignored us for a year and a half? Chris Dodi said, I'm not talking to you anymore. Or has it? That's public input. You know, goal one of the item, state land use, request open public input, and is, has blocked that for the last year and a half.
That there is a substantial written record of, of interaction back and forth. And, you know, I, again, I'm sorry that the design does not get all the way to your concerns, but there, there have been efforts to.
I appreciate that, but that's not for us. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the room that wants to speak? I just need the blue sheet. Any, is there anyone else? Yes.
Blair Garland, I'm with OSU Cascades.
Okay.
We have an officially scheduled agenda item outside of public comment if.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll be a public hearing, yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you so much. Yes. All right. I didn't, I thought I saw someone else picking up a blue form. All right. Is there anyone on Zoom, Stephanie, that you can see? Okay, no raised hands. All right. Thank you for that. We have a consent agenda?
So I haven't been able to review the minutes, but I'm comfortable, you know, approving and then, you know, going through after the fact, just in case there's a misspelling or anything. If there's any subs, anything substantive, I'll bring it up. But either way, I'm just letting you know I haven't been able to see the minutes.
Okay. So you're making a motion.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Yep, and I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
So then, just one acknowledgement, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, we're appointing four public members to be involved. So this is, you know, a date was set for the first meeting coming around here pretty quick. So I advocate for the community to follow our solid waste management plan efforts in the near future, 12 to 14 months. We're looking at, you know, bringing out, you know, proposed locations for our future landfill. So it's a, going to be a real big item the day we put the map on the table.
I think that meeting is tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:00.
Oh, great. Yeah, so I saw it.
Okay.
Coming.
Great. All right. Action item number one, the proclamation for Oregon State University. The beavers. Where are the beavers?
Would you like me to introduce the topic?
Oh, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Adair. Before, the commission this morning is a proclamation declaring April 27, 2022, as Oregon State University Cascade's damn proud day. And so today, we have Blair Garland, the Senior Director for Community Relations and Marketing, to provide a few remarks, if you're open to receiving those prior to reading the proclamation.
Yes, that would be lovely.
There we go. Welcome.
Thank you so much. We are very grateful for this proclamation. You know, damn proud day. It's Oregon State University's 24-hour giving day. It's next Wednesday. And it's a day where lots of supporters, alumni, community members, et cetera, come together to make things happen. And at OSU Cascades this year, our focus is on student scholarships. And as someone who works in higher education, and I see students every day, there are tons of students at OSU Cascades that have, they're very bright, they have a lot of potential, and in many cases, they just need that extra help through scholarships to be able to realize their, their academic and their professional dreams. And it goes one step beyond that because, of course, these are our next generation of entrepreneurs, our next generation of educators, our next generation of community leaders and of citizens. And so scholarships are vital to making all of this happen. And we are just so grateful for, for you all and for, for your support for this proclamation. And we're especially grateful for the support of the community. We could not be here and do what we're doing without the support of the community. And damn proud day is, is a day where, where lots of people come together. And even with small gifts to, to student scholarships, when they all come together, it makes a huge impact on students. So thank you all very much.
Thank you for joining us. I know, we, I had the pleasure of meeting a new employee for the county that happened to be a duck, and then he became a beaver. And he played in the Rose Bowl, but then he actually beat Oregon when he was a beaver. So, you know, I'm like, well, yeah, he was very well-balanced for the state. And thank goodness he's working for Deschutes County now. So we can only be so thankful. Do we need to approve this first before we read it? Or maybe we read it first?
Typically, you'll read it and then you.
Okay. Commissioner DeBonne, you want to take the first three paragraphs, and Commissioner Chang, the next three?
Sure. So before the Board of Commissioners of Deschutes County, Oregon, a proclamation declaring April 27, 2022, as Oregon State University Cascade's damn proud day. Whereas Oregon State University Cascade's campus was opened in 2016, following a 30-year grassroots effort led by central Oregon community members to bring a university to central Oregon to serve families, industries, and businesses in the region's economy. Whereas, community support continues to provide inspiration as OSU Cascade fulfills its mission to produce skilled graduates who will help create a better, safer, and smarter world as they join the 4,700 alumni who have graduated to date, to apply research excellence to challenges in central Oregon and create a campus for future generations of students. Whereas today, more than 1,240 students are pursuing bachelor's and master's degrees and represent communities in Deschutes County, including Bend, Lepine, Redmond, Sisters, Sun River, and Terriban. I bet Tumalo, too, will put right in there.
Whereas 32% of students at OSU Cascades are Pell Grant eligible, a strong indicator of financial need, and will benefit academically and personally from the financial support provided through scholarships. Whereas 25% of students at OSU Cascades are the first in their families to attend college without familiar knowledge of a college environment and its resources, who also benefit academically and personally from scholarship support. Whereas OSU Cascades is committed to the scholarship needs of students in order to help relieve the financial pressures of college so that they may follow in alumni's footsteps, focus on their academic pursuits, and embark on careers that make a difference in society.
Now, it therefore be resolved that the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 27, 2022, as damn proud day, a one-day fund and friend-raising event hosted by Oregon State University Cascades, and a special opportunity for Deschutes County community members to show pride in the progress at OSU Cascades and the impact made possible by scholarships for undergraduate students in need, dated this 20th day of April 22 by the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. So.
I'll move approval. Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yeah, so, real quick. So I'm really excited about the Innovation District, the campus itself, you know, just the physical plant and the buildings being constructed. It's such an exciting, especially the reuse of an old landfill, which was a county that people's landfill, and I already mentioned a landfill earlier. Also, the investment that we were able to do in childcare education and the foundational work that's going to be done for education and really creating that system for everybody. And one of my real joys is understanding the energy engineering program ever since, you know, Dr. Hagan specifically came to town, and I really got excited about the different opportunities. What does the future of energy look like? And this is where people can really learn, classroom plus research about, you know, energy engineering opportunities of the future. So those are a few items that I get real excited about.
I would just say that the access to higher education that OSU Cascades has provided to our community is profoundly transformative and is an incredibly welcome addition in the last decade of, of the history of our community. And the practical thing I would ask is, can you, can you go through again or in more detail what, what's happening on April 27 at campus or around the community?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. The event mostly takes place online. And so it's a damproudday.org. And, and through that website, you can search for OSU Cascades because there's a number of OSU initiatives on that same page. And right on that page, you can, you can give a donation. On campus, there's also going to be a lot of festivities, if you will. We're going to have a table open in the quad where we're going to have, you know, free snacks and things like that for campus. So if you want to come by and say hello, would appreciate anyone, anyone doing that. There's also going to be a board there where people can write things that they are proud about, about OSU Cascades. And so it'll be, it should be a great, a great day, a great day to build supporters and friends.
Thank you.
So vote yes.
Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. I'm sure my mother would be proud to know, as she is a be, was a beaver. She was never happy that I became a duck. So, Mom, this one's for you.
There you go.
Oh, and a picture. They want a picture now.
Oh, yeah, let's all get a photo.
Thank you all so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for joining us today.
Come on in.
Oh, what, do you want this? Do you want this?
I'm fine. Just it.
Okay.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. Okay. All right. Item number two, our public hearing this morning. Eric, did you want to open it?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. This item is CPACE, which stands for Commercial, Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. And I was trying to forward my slides. Oops, there we go. I went too far. Thanks, Stephanie. Thank you. Just to recap, at the March 16 board meeting, the board gave direction to staff to draft an ordinance and resolution supporting CPACE and also to schedule a public hearing. Is it the scroll? So Chair Adair, if you can open the public hearing, please?
Yes, please. We will open the public hearing at this moment. Or CPACE?
So just one, you know, so procedurally, this is a public hearing on the matter, and it would be adopted by ordinance, which puts items in the Deschutes County code for how we would implement this, correct?
Yeah, there's a portion that would include new code, county code, that it would be adopted through an ordinance. There's also a resolution that establishes the actual program. So you have both a resolution and an ordinance for your consideration at the conclusion of the public hearing.
And then either deliberations and, you know, if there's support, 90 days or by emergency also, are the two.
Right. Resolutions typically take effect upon signature, but the ordinance, we provided an emergency clause if you choose to select a sooner date or the standard 90-day. So both are, have been presented for your consideration.
Thank you.
As a summary of, of today, the Chair has opened the public hearing. This is a legislative matter. It is not quasi, quasi judicial. I'll present the staff report. There'll be an opportunities for public comment. The Chair will then, or it's recommended that we close the record, board deliberation, and possible board action. So that's kind of the structure. Next slide, please. CPACE provides financing for seismic upgrades, energy efficiency upgrades, water efficiency projects, renewable energy upgrades, energy storage, and smart electric vehicle charging stations. The mechanism is, the program uses a property lien, tax lien, to repay financing from third-party private capital providers. So the transaction is really between.
All right. Next slide, please. As Dave Doyle mentioned before, here's a resolution. It's Resolution 2022-023. The resolution establishes the program. It outlines the main goals and parameters of the program. There's also a utility notification requirement that occurred. A mailing went out to 152 utilities that operate within Deschutes County. Next slide. Then the draft ordinance, which is 2022-005. It establishes the lien security and collection procedures for CPACE liens. And then, in the definitions section, it lists eligible projects, which includes seismic rehabilitation, and then utilities improvements such as energy efficiency, renewable energy, energy storage, smart electric vehicle charging stations, and water efficiency. So, those are the eligible projects as outlined in the ordinance.
Pardon me, one other step here. So, and we trace that back to what the state allows us to put in CPACE? Or, you know, where does the authority come for this? Or is this a choice?
It's from the ORRS. The ORRS has a broad range. Counties can restrict that and have less items, but what you see listed there is kind of the full options as provided by the state.
Thank you.
Also, I just wanted to acknowledge that there has been some submitted written testimony. 350 Deschutes sent a letter to the board on April 14th. It included a list of CPACE supporters and their comments. And then, the board also received an email from Sisters City Councilor Jennifer Letts supporting the program. That concludes the staff report. Happy to take any questions, or if there aren't any questions, the board may want to proceed to the public comment period.
And I also want to acknowledge a letter from the city of Sisters. It was February 25th from Corey Mizeley saying that the city council unanimously supported CPACE. That was an older letter that we had.
And the reminder from Councilor Letts that in the city of Sisters, there are very few incentives available for, you know, clean energy projects because the Energy Trust of Oregon does not serve that area. That was a significant additional consideration and benefit of adopting CPACE for that portion of the county.
Okay. I believe now we have the moment for public comments?
Correct.
Okay. We do have one person that has signed up at this moment. Paula Latassa, would you care to give us your testimony, please?
Thank you, Chair Adair and Commissioners. Really appreciate your leadership in supporting CPACE, which gives access to private capital for developers and commercial property owners for financing renewable energy and resiliency projects. And I do want to add, Commissioner DeBon, that we have definitely had strong interest from folks that want to do retrofits. So, in fact, Dirk Vanhelling, who has testified multiple times and also spoken with you individually, has, wants to do retrofits on three of his small commercial buildings. So, he is just one example of many. I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, along with the support that we've been seeing, we, I know that you have received at least 21 individual letters of support from businesses and commercial property owners that are interested in using CPACE for retrofits or new developments. We know that not only do we have the support from the city of Sisters, but you've also received letters of support from the city of Bend and the city of Redmond. We have at least 55, we have over 113 online endorsements, and at least 55 of our endorsements are coming from businesses and commercial property owners. And when we first started this process, just slightly over a year ago, we know that that was what you really wanted to see. Is this program going to work? Are, is it in demand from stakeholders? And I believe that that has been demonstrated, and I really appreciate that you've been listening to the folks that want to be able to use this program. We really see this as a golden opportunity for our community and our county, as well as our business, our businesses, to take, you know, as we face the rising costs of energy, and we see that there are serious issues with emissions from our buildings that are related to our buildings, and we want to be able to reduce these emissions, this is a golden opportunity for us to give the business community the tools that they really need to meet their own goals for reducing emissions, as well as to make our community healthier and the whole state, the state as a whole. So, we really appreciate that you've supported CPACE this far, and we ask you to act now and pass CPACE, a CPACE ordinance, and get a program into place as quickly as you see feasible. We really hope that, based on some of the project needs that we're seeing and hearing, that this program might be available by midsummer. So, thank you again for your time and your attention to this matter.
Thank you, Paula. That was three seconds to spare.
I have one question for you, Paula.
I am.
Thank you very much for joining us. So, in our program guidebook from the CPACE program, it's kind of an adopted property template document on page six of it, which is 61 in our packet. Under Qualified Projects, we talk about two bullet items, and then the item A, the lowercase a, talks about renewable energy improvements related to renewable resources, which include low-impact hydro projects, wind, solar energy, geothermal energy, bioenergy from biomass like manure and wood products, or biogas like methane. Are those viable projects or that you envision? You know, I'm just thinking, we've got biomass in the woods all day, every day, and if somebody had some efficient boiler for doing that, somebody could be combusting something and possibly fitting under this program.
There have-
Is that a trigger for you? Or is, you know, I'm just thinking, because, you know?
Is it a trigger for me?
Just, yeah, that's kind of my concept question, yeah.
Sure. Oh, I've, I'm, what is important is that the intent of the law is to reduce emissions. And so, I, from my experience, I have seen really good biomass projects. There are far and few between, and I've also seen really, really bad ones. And what is important to follow the intent of the legislation is that these projects be clean energy. And so, there should be an eye to making sure that a project isn't just renewable energy, but that it is also meeting the goal of reducing emissions. Is that the heart of your question?
Well, as I say, and this is just a conversation for you and I, but I just want to have this conversation a little bit. You know, when we have these uncontrolled forest fires, we have emissions. Oh, do we have emissions?
Yes, we do.
And if we could utilize it for any beneficial purpose, you know, beneficial combustion, and, you know, as I say, the energy market and the cost of energy and transportation and processing of forest waste is always the conundrum.
Yes.
But, you know, and we've, you know, endorsed or tried to help financially support the biomass facility at Mount Bachelor, so they don't have to truck propane up there, too. So, my, just, I'm just advocating, somewhere, someday, somebody's going to be able to combust something for beneficial use in a controlled environment, which is going to be low particulate, but it'll still be burning a carbon source into the atmosphere. So, just acknowledging that, and I do support that.
I acknowledge it as well, and it is a conundrum. And again, I think for us, coming from 350 Deschutes, the emphasis would be on clean energy. I know that Prineville, right now, maybe you're aware, they are looking at implementing a biomass project. They claim that it can reduce, it would reduce 99.5% of emissions or control them. So, if that's the case, you know, that's, that's a good example. But we do believe that it's very important that that be included upfront, looking at what are the total emissions of that project, and are you actually reducing emissions? And I'm really glad to hear that you're looking at that whole life cycle. That's so critical because you have all the transportation issues. You have, you know, and like you stated with Mount Bachelor, it's the, you know, either you're transporting fuel up there or you're utilizing a resource that's up there. And so, if we're looking at the whole picture and that cradle-to-grave scenario, you know, the project should reduce the overall emissions. That's the goal.
I'm just excited. I think of, you know, biomass is about 100-year cycle of carbon-
Yeah.
-cycle, and ancient oil is just, you know, million-year cycle or whatever. So, that 100-year cycle is probably a lot more beneficial, you know, for that carbon cycle. So, just acknowledging it's in our document here, and people might come up with a proposed project down that line.
Yes.
We might hope they would.
We should parse this out a little bit as well because biomass, renewable energy projects are proposed in a number of different contexts, and I'm not sure that CPACE would be applicable to a number of them. For example, is, you know, someone who wants to build a biomass power plant that is not necessarily a commercial building, that is an industrial, industrial project? So, I'm not sure, you know, is that kind of an, you know, an industrial use or industrial building? Is that eligible for CPACE, or is that a different category? Another category to think about is public entities. You know, oftentimes, you know, when we look at the higher-efficiency biomass projects that are more likely to show a net carbon benefit, those are typically thermal energy projects, and thermal energy projects are typically large boilers, which you find very frequently in large public buildings. So, if we're talking about a public agency, you know, a public agency wanting to do a biomass energy project, you know, are they eligible for CPACE financing as well? So, those are two that I want to, because I can definitely, I can also, I can picture, I can picture commercial properties in the private sector where there are large boiler systems, where, you know, biomass energy might be, might be feasible, you know? For example, the, you know, a couple of the largest boilers in the community are at St. Charles Hospital. You know, there's a, that's a commercial property. So, there's some different categories, and I'm just trying to figure out whether CPACE could be used for all of those or some subset of those.
It could be used for all of them. The, and we're not opposed to omitting the bioenergy if this is creating a problem. We're not opposed at all. So, I don't know if that's the concern here, but-
No, not for me.
Okay. So, to answer a couple of your questions, a government entity, of course, could apply for a CPACE loan. It is our understanding that that has been very far and few between because, as government entities, you typically have different pockets and pools of money that you can get at a lower interest rate. So, that's our knowledge. But of course, you would be eligible, the government entity would be eligible. And as far as your example of St. Charles or another business, they would definitely, those projects would be eligible as long as they're meeting that criteria for clean energy and that, those really, those decisions really come down to the lender and the lendee when they're going through their loan application before it even comes to the county or whoever's going to be doing this check-the-box program. And then, that person would, you know, definitely have the final say in whether or not they have met the standards for the program. But it's, again, it's really kind of, what's beautiful about this is it's really that private market decision between the lender and the lendee. On a different note, but sort of the same path, what we have seen in the CPACE world as far as case examples from biomass, it's been much larger operations, and typically it's, what we've seen is on dairy cow farms where they're recapturing that biogas energy and, well, the manure, and then they're turning it into a biogas energy source. Those are some of the more typical projects we've seen, but all of the things that you mentioned, Commissioner Chang definitely would qualify if it meets the standards for the lender.
Thank you.
And the clean energy standards.
Well, I'm an advocate for it. You know, I think of, there's a heating district in Burns that the community has in place, but, you know, we're talking about Mount Bachelor. I know that the Forest Service Office here in Bend has a pellet boiler, the high school in Sisters has a pellet boiler that's in place for probably eight or 10 years now. So, and those are government facilities at that point. But OSU Cascades is working on the energy engineering, so there may be an opportunity for that small or midsize onsite boiler someday, which could be fueled by, you know, biomass waste, pellets, chips, you know, hydrogen, you know, talking about how to, how to crack some of this stuff. So, the future could be very exciting is where I'm at.
Yes. Be nice to get there, wouldn't it?
Yep. So, as I say, this is kind of a conversation with you. Thanks for joining us now at this point in time during the, so the economic analysis provided by Eco Northwest talks, and there's page 28 of our document, page three of their document, talks about Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, short letter suggesting the CPACE program violates standard mortgage provisions, talks about presence, presents significant safety and soundness concerns for housing industry. So, then that, that points out, commercial may be the way to go and possibly not for housing for a future PACE program. And I don't know what the status, this is from 2010, so I don't know what the status is if anybody's doing a residential PACE program.
There are a handful of states that are doing the residential program. That, for us to be able to do the residential program, it would need to be established at the state level. We have seen that where it's been put in place, there have been some really effective projects, and we would love to see it expanded to that. We do know that there were some hiccups several years ago with there not being enough oversight and regulation. Apparently, commercial is regulated much more rigorously than the residential market. And so, with the CPACE program, they had to do some revisions to make the more stringent guidelines for establishing the residential program, but it is really starting to relaunch, and we would, you know, we would love to see it expanded to that, and we'd love to help make that happen, but it would have to be a legislative action.
And then, yeah, so that's the answer right there. The state hasn't gone down that path, so we don't have that opportunity even for that discussion.
Not yet.
I hear you. But that's good to understand. And then, the last concept is just, please.
Before we leave that, I would also emphasize that multifamily housing projects are a pretty typical commercial property that makes use of these CPACE incentives or CPACE financing opportunities in other places. So, we've heard from a number of, a number of multifamily housing developers in our community about the desire to have access to CPACE financing. So, just because we don't have residential-scale CPACE available at this time, it doesn't mean that CPACE can't contribute to, you know, clean energy opportunities in, in our housing stock in the, in the community.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Chang. That is a really great point, and of course, one of these very developers is in the room. I don't know if he's going to choose to speak today, but I know you've heard from Perry Brooks multiple times about the developments that they intend to do that are net zero and really bring up the specs for clean energy in their buildings and reduce energy burden on those tenants. Yesterday, we spoke with Killian Pacific, who's doing the big project over in the Mill District, about 312 units, and they're very excited and hopeful to be able to implement CPACE on their projects, which, again, would really reduce the energy building in their multifamily. Well, it's mixed use, but they're going to have, I think, 312 multifamily units in there. So, thank you for bringing that up.
And so, they're at a point in time where if this does not actually be implemented till 2023, that's-
Yesterday, we spoke with Killian Pacific, who's doing the big project over in the Mill District, about 312 units, and they're very excited and hopeful to be able to implement CPACE on their projects, which again, would really reduce the energy building in their multifamily, well, it's mixed use, but they're going to have, I think, 312 multifamily units in there. So thank you for bringing that up.
And so they're at a point in time where if this does not actually be implemented till 2023, that still fits with their scenario then.
They're going to start their financing package, I believe they said this fall is when they'll need to be putting things together. Are you seeing that we might have a delay till 2023 to get this in place?
I thought that was what you had said originally, that you said into place as quickly as next summer. Now, you're talking about summer 22.
Oh, did I say next?
You did say next. I wrote it down.
Reference to last year, right?
No, I mean, that's what I wrote down.
This summer, I'm hoping that's what we were all talking about.
Well, that's what I, I wrote that down. Okay, all right. So we'll say this summer then.
And I know, and would you like to speak for yourself, sir?
So one other concept too, and as I say, you can respond to these, that's, that's why I'm asking them out, so we all hear it. So two scenarios for financing. If, if there's an existing commercial building, somebody says, oh, I want to do CPACE, put solar panels on my roof, and they have existing debt associated with that property, does the existing mortgage holder or, you know, whatever debt is associated, are they notified? Do they have authority to be part of that transaction?
Not only are they notified, they're required to sign off.
Yeah, okay.
And that will be in the, the documents that Eric and the staff have been working on with support from the CPACE Alliance. There is a lender consent form that absolutely has to be completed before a project can be fully signed off on.
For existing debt?
Yes.
Yeah, so then, because the other scenario is the capital stack for a new construction, which everybody hopefully is informed during that process, and I would assume that would happen there. So that, that was my question. Thank you.
It's a good question and yeah, it's, it's a critical component to make sure that the program is successful.
Great, thank you so much.
So, thank you very, any other questions? Good.
I, I believe, I don't think he signed in, but since he, since he's been alluded to, I believe that Mr. Brooks would like to speak if that works for everyone.
Sure, you can just fill out the blue form afterwards, please. Thanks, Perry.
Perry Brooks. Yes, our project, we anticipate starting at the end of the year, and that's a 36 unit apartment building on Fourth and Only. I think you'll see with House Bill 458 coming, going active in end of June, and that allows for triplexes, quadplexes on residential zone properties, you'll see, I would assume you'll see a lot of access to CPACE to finance those projects as well. And just being in the development world and hearing kind of the word on the street, there's a lot of interest now that CPACE really is going to, going to happen within the development community and how that will help, you know, provide financing for a multitude of projects.
Okay.
Guys, any questions?
So that brings up the concept, this is a Board of Commissioners to Schuets County decision, putting it in the county code, and this automatically applies to the cities? Or is there any adoption process for city jurisdiction for development?
It'd be up to the city whether they participate, but the program's countywide.
So is there another step for a city? Are they default opted in or?
They can utilize the program as far as what their rules are in their city charters, I have no idea.
Mr. Brooks, do you have any insight into that? Yeah, no, this is for you.
Yeah.
Is the city by default implementing this or do they have to take an action for this? Now, I haven't gone down this path, I've never thought about it.
I can't speak for the city, but I would assume it's just by default, they're, they're privy to access to the program.
We did send out communication to the four city managers in the area to, to keep them in the loop. My understanding is that they're, as, as Dave Doyle mentioned, it's a countywide program, so somebody in the city could apply again, unless the charter doesn't allow it.
So by default, it will probably be active in all the cities? I mean, I don't know that fact right now, but.
It's probably where the majority of the action will occur is in the cities, yeah.
But, but so there's no action at a city council level?
Yeah, it's going to be in the cities.
But there's no action needed at a city council?
I don't know, I don't, I'm not.
Yeah, so that's an unknown.
I don't know, there's any charter.
This isn't a land use, this isn't a land use thing where we're butting up against the land use authority of, of the cities. This is a, this is a creation of a financing program or, you know, that's a structure for a financing program. So I mean, the, my understanding is that the, the, the only potential sticking points with the cities that we might run into is if we try to ask them to be the administrator of the program, then they, they may or may not be interested in, in taking that on.
So Mr. Brooks, you think that, yeah, it's going to be available as soon as it's available on the books at the county?
Yes.
So that's just a good point of clarity.
Countywide program, so if they choose to utilize it, I'm not sure how the administrative piece of that would occur. I don't know if the city of managers have spoken to Eric or anybody about that, but, and I think a lot of that will depend on who's going to ultimately administer the program, whether it's going to be outsourced or, you know, somebody at the county.
But this will be a countywide program that we're putting the documents in place, we're signing the, the resolution and ordinance to implement.
Well, we're voting first.
Well, I'm just saying, the scenario is, if it's approved, yep, you're right. But yeah, so there may be no overhead for the city though, that's, I'm just trying to get to that point.
Yeah, it could be that it's, yeah, they don't really incur any, any costs.
They don't even need to know what's happening, it's just builder is funded, move on.
What, what my plan is, is once the program is up and running, to provide the cities with information so that they could help market the program. But I probably, I emailed the city managers, but I could double back and check with them to say, could you evaluate to see if, if it's, to ensure that it's applicable in their city?
Yep, something we learned today. Okay, thank you.
I, I mean, I think that'll ultimately come down to the lenders. If the lenders feel there's some additional obstacle or hurdle involving the city jurisdiction, if that's where the property is, then that'll be something they address.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that that's going to be a concern of the county, assuming that the county adopts this program countywide.
Oh, Perry, don't forget to fill out a blue form, please. Thank you so much. I'm sure we, we have your information in the record, but it would be appreciated. All right, are there any other comments? Is there anyone else in the room that is commenting? Do you see anyone on Zoom, Stephanie? No? Okay, all right. So let's, it seems that it's appropriate at this moment in time, we have been working on this for several months, to close the record, oral and written at this time. Is that, does that?
I support that.
Is that a minimal? Okay. All right.
You know, on the question of emergency adoption, you know, I don't think it's particularly urgent because there's a whole lot of work to be done to figure out how we're going to operationalize this and who's going to administer it. So I think that can happen simultaneous with a 90 day window.
Yes, that seems to make sense.
I'd like to see that happen simultaneous with a 90 day window.
That's the plan, that's the staff plan.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that, Eric. Okay. Okay. So can we look at the resolution then? Do we have?
Resolution's at page 20 of your packet.
So yeah, for deliberations then, I mean, I support this program cautiously, you know, we've had a lot of great input from advocates of the program, you know, I've talked to some commercial lender people and they're, they don't even have a lot of brain space for this. They're like, what is it and who's talking about it? Which is fine, but, and that would, you know, get me to a point of, you know, there's no emergency need for, for adopting this. So this would be a first and second reading scenario to be able to, you know, let the developers go to their financial institutions and start talking it up, and then that'll be the moment they're like, oh, well, you know, there's something complicated here or this is going to be an easy path or whatever's going to happen. We don't know exactly yet, but yeah, so I'm supportive of proceeding.
Yeah, I get, I guess, you know, kind of to follow that, I would say that this is not something that every financial institution needs to decide to do. We just need a couple who are interested, and we have heard from First Interstate Bank and others that, that they are doing CPACE deals in other, in other communities and that they would be enthusiastic about being able to do that here.
It's amazing that we do have 152 utilities, you said, in Schuets County?
That's correct.
Right. I know, I'm like 152, okay.
It includes, it includes every water utility and there's a lot.
But that's still, that's more than I would have imagined, so anyway. So do we have a motion then for the resolution?
So one discussion item, there's about the fourth whereas, it says, whereas Schuets County is committed to equitably, equitably advancing sustainable economic development and the county will work to ensure communities most in need will benefit from this, these opportunities. I'm proposing that maybe that's an extraneous statement. It is for anybody and everybody, and I'm happy to be able to, you know, advocate for this, but, you know, it just seems to be, yeah, extraneous possibly from the, from my worldview.
Where specifically are we looking?
It's a paragraph down.
Page 20 of the packet, fourth whereas. Because sustainability, I mean, if we're thumbs up on sustainability, I don't understand the equitability concept, it's going to be available for anybody and everybody and ensure communities, you know, as I say, these are political statements and not, not facts in my world. Because I know we're providing it for anybody and everybody.
So you want to eliminate that?
Yeah, strike that.
I mean, I, the, the Sisters situation that we just heard about, I think is a perfect example of, of why it would be helpful to have a, a statement like this in here. We know that the, we know that the community of Sisters, since they're not in Cascade Natural Gas and they're not in Pacific Power, do not have equitable access to incentives and financing opportunities to pursue these kinds of investments in commercial properties in their community and, you know, the, you know, investments in the value and performance of their buildings. So, I mean, this is, this is a way of actually equalizing that. So I, I, I think that that, that this is a good statement from that perspective. You know, I would certainly argue that Sisters is one of the communities most in need because of the lack of other incentives and financing opportunities.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm proposing striking it if there's support or not, that's fine.
Well, we have heard from most of the commu, the communities. So I think they're well aware.
I'm not in support of striking it, but one vote, so I can.
Is there an opportunity for me to elaborate?
No. No, we've closed it. Thank you, Paula.
Yep. But as I say, I mean, that was just the one statement in there, so I, I'll, we'll see where it goes. So I'll move Resolution Number 2022-023, striking the fourth whereas as, as discussed. And then we can read the title of it.
Okay. And Commissioner Chang, you won't second that?
I won't second that. I would, I would like to offer an alternative motion to approve the ordinance as written.
I, I don't really feel it's necessary. Dave, do you have any feedback on that? Can I ask you?
It's.
It's standard?
Standard boilerplate that, that came with the, the Oregon specific documents. Whether it's included or not is not going to be critical to the program, whether it survives or doesn't survive, you can move forward with or without it.
Okay.
This is really a board decision.
Well, it seems like our communities that are most in need already know about it, so it seems a bit unnecessary. So, okay, I can second your motion, Commissioner Devon.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion for the Resolution 2022-023?
If, if functionally it accomplishes what's needed, then as, as I said, I, I think that that whereas is actually beneficial and useful, but I'll certainly vote for moving the resolution forward without it.
Thank you.
And I'll vote yes also.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Yes, and Commissioner Chang, you said yes?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So for the resolution.
Okay.
So now we need to look at the ordinance.
So there's, are there two versions or two copies of it? So it's just a?
There's one with an emergency clause, you can fill in the date, and then there's one with the standard 90 day.
So the second one is the non-emergency clause then? Yep, got it.
Yeah, they're at page 12 and page 14 in your packet. Page 14 is the standard 90 day adoption and page 12 is the emergency clause where you could fill in the effective date.
Okay. All right, so we've already, we've pretty well discussed the fact that emergency isn't appropriate at this moment. 90 days will give the county adequate time in order to pull everything together?
Yes.
Are there any other comments? No? Is there a motion?
I move Board adoption and approval of ordinance number 2022-005.
And I'll second it.
It's first reading by title only.
First reading by.
First reading by title only.
Okay.
And I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And ordinance, and the chair votes yes, by title only, ordinance number 20022-005 and ordinance enacted Section 4.35 of the Schuets County Code, by title only.
We'll bring it back in two weeks for second reading.
Okay, two weeks?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Here we go.
And I'd like to thank Dave Doyle for working on the draft or, on the ordinance and resolution. He's been very helpful.
Thank you.
And Paula for her assistance as well.
Yeah, congratulations.
Well, let's hope the community is, it makes a difference for our community.
I'm, I'm excited to provide these opportunities for people who want to invest in the performance and value of their buildings. And I do want, just want to ask what our, what our plan is for, you know, working through the scenarios for, you know, operationalizing this and administration of the program.
Yeah, the, the board has supported adding a position in admin. The position won't, it's, it'll be in the proposed budget, it won't start until the summer, so we'll, I'll be working with Nick to find out how to get, get some of the work started now. It could be grabbing somebody on call or, well, Nick and I will look at some options to get the ball rolling until the position is hopefully added in the, in the summer. So the, the plan is to, to get the program up and running when it's effective, but it's, you know, the, the position will be added in a couple of months, but we want to, we'll get going on, on the program now.
Thank you.
So then just one other note about development, you know, so the House Bill 458 was mentioned and, you know, the triplexes, duplexes and, you know, there's, I mean, it's just a call because the state put this in place and the cities, Ben seems to be supporting, but redeveloping an existing neighborhood is going to be awkward for existing homeowners. So new development, urban growth boundary, you know, build-in duplexes, you know, six unit, there's a beautiful apartment opportunities out there, but redeveloping existing neighborhoods is always that kind of conflict point. So I'm just pointing that out, we can acknowledge it and let's not, yeah, perturb the existing neighborhoods as too much if possible. So, great, thank you.
There's also the issue of private property rights and supporting a, a land, a property owner's right to do, to do what they, what they want to do, that's within the law, that they think is economically beneficial for them.
Well, I'm just acknowledging, state legislatures doing this to existing neighborhoods, which is not supported by myself.
We, we talk about that a lot on the, on the outskirts of the cities and, and the rural county, so just, just wanting to reemphasize that. You know, in this case, I'm, I'm certainly a supporter of private property rights.
And if I just.
Wonderful.
I think all House Bill 458 did was to allow those, the missing middle, but those townhouses or whatever they may be, duplexes, to be individually owner-occupied, and, and I've seen a head shake, yes. So that was, that was the, the key for House Bill 4058, was really to allow those to be individually owned. It was House Bill 2001 that really set the stage for House Bill 4058. I thought I'd recalled that correctly, but still, I'm not.
Yeah.
Blaying into the policy decision, but just the clarity on what that bill did.
Great.
Thank you for the clarification, Nick. Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, item number nine, Lee Randall, would you like to give us our, your presentation?
Good morning, Lee Randall, Facilities Director.
Captain Paul Garrison, Sheriff's Office.
Joe Brendage, Sheriff's Office.
And we are here this morning regarding a second-floor remodel project at the Sheriff's Office, and I'll just give you a brief summary, and then we'll be open for any questions that you may have. So the project is to create three private offices from, and an additional conference room from areas that were either a conference room or open lobby space. We've encountered this across the county as various offices and departments grow. They need to better utilize the space that was built into the original design, and so that, that's really the upshot of the project. As part of it, there are some HVAC reconfigurations that if, that do contribute to the cost, which we run into whenever we're making those changes to an original design. The, we did solicit quotes from six different contractors. Three declined to respond, which we think is really kind of part and parcel of how busy the construction environment is currently. And then we did receive three responses that we felt were very competitive and close. We're able to work with the lowest responsive contractor on part of the scope, and we're able to reduce that cost to a lower amount, and so the, the lowest responsive contractor was Penns Contractors. We've worked with them in the past on a few projects, and today you have before you the request to move approval for county administrator's signature of the contract with Penns Contractors for this work. And I'll pass it to Sheriff's Office if they have any comments.
Not unless you have any specific questions, Commissioners.
Just a little bit about the, kind of the flow, as I say, when we, so when we go up the steps, there's kind of a seating area and a conference room, getting to the, the captains in the sheriff's office out there, so is, any, any vision about what, what it's going to look like after this? I don't know that we're seeing that in the papers.
Yeah, so the, it'll be a removal of where the current conference room is and reallocating that as to the legal offices of our, our in-house counsel and the paralegal that are signed there, and removing that conference room and putting it more of a central location, which, Lee can speak far better to that, but that was a prior design that was a little flawed when it was originally conceived, and so we're just trying to rectify that. We also encountered due to that some, some issues with some confidentiality problems that arose, that were brought to light during a legal proceeding, and so we want to rectify that.
Right. And that's the conference room that we see on when we're talking remotely, yeah, so I just, yeah, and I got a good feel for it, but yeah, that'll be good. So then, a little bit better office setup, and then moving that conference room into that kind of reception area that's, we just all walk through as we come in.
Yes.
Got it.
So it was the conference room that I was in a week ago Monday, when I came over for the Forest Service meeting?
Yes.
That, that's the room that's going to be more properly engaged for operations?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I know we've seen a few things that Penns Contractors have done.
They've done a great job, and we look forward to working with them on this project if the board approves.
How long, how long is it expected for the project to take?
We, we think actual construction will take about three months. With, you're all aware of all the procurement challenges that we have, and so once we get the contract executed, they'll move quickly into procuring the long-lead items, and that will kind of determine the starting date for the project. But we think once everything's in hand and they start the project, about three months to, to complete it.
Okay.
So, so this doesn't affect my support for the project or not, but I'm, I'm just curious, what compartment of the, the Sheriff's Office budget does, do projects like this come out of?
This comes out of the countywide tax district.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Well, yeah, so just acknowledge, I'm excited that we have a, an engaged contractor at this time, and I would advocate for those construction jobs, there's opportunities everywhere out there these days, and I'm happy that we did get, you know, multiple responses to the RFP and being able to negotiate with them, so it's really good to be able to even have this in hand. So with that, I'll move approval of the county administrator's signature of the services contract, the amount of $171,500 with Penns Contractors for the remodel of the second floor of the Sheriff's Office Administration Building.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you for joining us, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 10. Kyle, thank you.
Oh, look at that. Wow. Did I happen to find the second one in there?
You are so nice, very thoughtful.
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. I am here today for a second reading of two ordinances. This is, again, to remind the Commissioners, for a Plan Amendment Zone change for two properties just east of the city of Bend. It's 80 acres in total. The proposal in this case is to change them from an agricultural designation to a rural residential exceptionary designation, and again, to change the zoning from what is currently exclusive farm use to multiple-use agricultural zone. With that, I can answer any questions. This is, again, the second of, of two readings, the, the first reading was two weeks ago.
Yes. Okay. Is there a motion?
Sure, so second reading by, I'll move approval of second reading by title only of ordinance number 2022 dash 003 and ordinance 2022 dash 004.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Devon?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, moving approval of second reading of ordinance number 22 dash 22 dash, excuse me, 20 dash 22 003, and ordinance amending Deschutes County Code, Title 23, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Change the Comprehensive Plan Map Designation for Certain Property from Agricultural to Rural Residential Exceptionary, and Prescribing an Effective Date on the 90th Day After the Date of Adoption. And that's by title only, second reading, and then second reading of ordinance number 20 dash 22, excuse me, 2022 dash 004, and ordinance amending Deschutes County Code, Title 18, the Deschutes County Zoning Map to Change the Zone Designation for Certain Property from Exclusive Farm Use to Multiple-Use Agricultural, and Prescribing an Effective Date on the 90th Day After Date of Adoption, by title only.
Want to move adoption?
Did you want to move it?
Yeah, I can move, so it'd be of the two ordinances by title only?
No, it didn't even have to be by title, it'd just be a motion moving adoption of ordinance 2022 dash 003 and ordinance 2022 dash 004.
I move adoption of ordinance number 2022 dash 003 and ordinance 2022 dash 004.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just to clarify, this will become effective on July 19th and less appealed further to Luba or any other state courts.
Okay, effective July 19th.
July 19th.
Thank you, Kyle.
Kyle, do, do you have a sense of other appeals pending?
It is a possibility, certainly, I mean, any, any of these are always open to appeals by an interested party, and so it's possible, but I don't know offhand. Of course, have a good day.
Thank you, thank you, Kyle. Okay, it looks like we have the Jericho Road update. Thank you so much for joining us, Don.
Always a pleasure. I don't really need the cane, it's a prop. I use it to get sympathy.
Oh, there you go.
I love what it does.
Hey, I should get one too, then.
Commissioners Adair, Devon, Chang, Mr. Lulak, Mr. Krop, and Mr. Boyle both escaped. My name is Don Senical, and I am speaking to you on behalf of Jericho Road, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit social service organization based in Redmond. It has been three long years since Jericho Road is last able to make a presentation to this commission, and we are extremely grateful for the opportunity to do once again and do it in person. I'm here today to inform, to show our appreciation, and ask for your continued support. Each of you has been provided a packet that includes our annual report, brochure, and our benefit golf tournament poster for your review. Most of the information I am sharing with you today comes from these sources. Jericho Road is governed by a board of 11 directors, seven women and four men. Each of them has a specific program responsibility and helps coordinate the more than 250 volunteers from our community who help deliver the essence of our programs. We are also the largest ecumenically-supported organization in central Oregon, with 15 local congregations providing both financial and volunteer support for our programs. Our mission statement is to provide consistent, nurturing, and tangible support to the homeless and those in need within the Redmond, Oregon, area. We have been living our mission for 17 years by operating and maintaining six specific programs. First and oldest is our Housing Assistance Program, which provides rental support for families with children, senior citizens, veterans, the disabled, and survivors of domestic violence, among others. In 2021, we prevented 99 adults and 92 children from becoming homeless in Redmond. The cost of this program was $24,849, or about $130 per person to prevent homelessness. Second, our Jericho Table started with one night each week and has grown to five nights a week, serving free meals to the homeless and hungry, including the working poor. In 2021, at the height of COVID, we managed to provide more than 9,000 meals to 5,257 adults and 1,079 children. Program costs were $50,552, or $7.97 per person. Third, our Weekend Food Program was severely impacted by COVID because it involves providing food packs to assist hungry students in Redmond schools. Naturally, when schools closed and learning was remote, we had to make adjustments. Thanks to the students themselves, who are now our program volunteers and preparers, under particular supervision, we were still able to load 5,580 pounds of food into 1,422 bags to help support these children and their families. This program costs $14,422 to operate. We also provide lunch bags during the summer months. Each bag we fill costs about $7.50. Fourth and fifth, our Emergency Service and Homeless Camp Outreach Programs provide direct support to people living in circumstances none of us would wish on any other human being. These people are able to survive without running water, garbage, or sewage, sewage services, and live in tents, lean-tos, vehicles, and makeshift shelters. Our programs provide tents, sleeping bags, clothes, food, water, fuel, pet food, and much more, to help these people sustain and to eventually receive the kinds of services that are able to move them from inhumane living conditions to proper shelters and transitional shelters. In 2021, these services helped men, women, and children in our community at a cost of $21,200. We would especially like to thank the Deschutes County Behavior Health Department folks, Colleen, Katie, Salamar, and Peer Counselor Jeremy, for their critical support in helping people who are trying to cope with unique challenges by providing bridges and, to, bridges to treatment and to recovery. Sixth is our new shower program, which has been in operation for some time, but was forced to stop by COVID conditions and the fact that the ancient shower truck we had inherited finally broke down and was beyond repair. Now, thanks to a generous and anonymous gift of $100,000, plus additional donations of more than $20,000, we have replaced that old unit with a brand-new shower truck, trailer, and truck. The trailer is equipped with three stalls and can be set up on-site, so people do not have to travel, but for lack of transportation, and leave their few possessions to the mercy of weather or theft. In providing this service, we help maintain people their height, we help people maintain their personal hygiene and some of their dignity. As you know, many of the homeless are working citizens, and as such, they depend on our showers to help with their personal cleanliness and hygiene in order to maintain their jobs. It is our intention to expand the service to other locations in the Redmond area and beyond as soon as possible. We've also provided you with posters promoting our annual benefit golf tournament. It will happen on Saturday, August 13th, at Eagle Crest Resort. Deschutes County has committed to being a major sponsor, and we look forward to a Deschutes County team to share the day. Maybe each of your regions can put together a team of four and come out and enjoy the day. Over the course of the last several months.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, I think I missed it the last four years.
I have.
It's not necessarily a challenge, but it could be. Over the course of the last several months, the Deschutes County Commissioners have dedicated hundreds of thousands of dollars to help secure safe and healthy living conditions for the homeless and working poor of our region. Jericho Road applauds your recognition of your responsibility and your general support for organizations dedicated to help people find proper and safe living conditions. Jericho Road provides critical services and direct contact and conversation with people who have literally been shut off from any meaningful human contact or access to humane treatment. We listen, we care, we act, we help whenever possible, and with your support, we would like to continue until our services in the Redmond community and Deschutes County are no longer necessary. Thank you for your time and attention. If you have any questions, I will be very happy to attempt an answer.
Great job, thank you very much for joining us.
Oh, I'm a little upset with Eric because he, I sent him this stuff, and I know he got this stuff to you before I had a chance to give it to you, but that's what happens when you have efficient and professional.
Yeah, we got.
So, Don, I was wondering, when you said many of the people that are using your shower truck are working.
Yes, ma'am.
How many of the people that are using the truck really are working? Do you, I mean, do you think it's 40%?
Well, I, I can only tell you now that a cursory count of the population off of Antler Avenue, east of Redmond, and that is not including the people that are on Evergreen and the other part of the town, there's approximately 400 people that are living, 400 homeless people living in that area, so if you would.
Just on Antler?
Yeah. I know that the point in time has got different figures, but you understand that most of those people won't leave where they. that most of those people won't leave where they are to go someplace to be counted, regardless of what incentives might be in place. So, what you see from point in time is like the tip of the iceberg. I would say that -- this is a guess, okay? I would say maybe 10% to 15% of the people that are in those conditions in all areas, not just in that particular area, are people that are actually working.
I know. I used to talk to someone who worked at a gas station in North Bend, and he was working, but he was homeless, and that was one of the things he kept saying is, "Patty, you've got to get me housing. You've got to get me housing," but he was working.
Well, it's critical for -- well, it's critical for everyone, but--
Right.
It's -- yeah.
So, you think 10% to 15%?
That's more your responsibility than it is mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Pass it back. All right.
Well, yeah, as I say, thank you very much for your efforts. A lot of great history there, a lot of great, you know, people involved. So, thank you for your leadership and then the whole board that's running Jericho Road.
Don.
It is time, as a community, to figure out the culture of the future, right? So, we've come through two years of a COVID. We're coming out of winter. What does it look like next fall? You know, are we going to be watching this grow? Are we going to help shrink it? Are we offering the people in most need the right services? So, it's all happening right now, and it's, you know, it's serious business.
Yes. And the ironic part is that you're coming into a part of the year, if it's as warm as it was last year. We lost more people, more homeless people to the heat last year than we did -- than we ever have to the cold, because, thank God, a lot of warming shelters have been put in place to help during those conditions. But during the summer months, especially with COVID, when there were air condition -- like the library, places like that, or recreational facilities that are absolutely not available. So, hopefully, with COVID allowing us to reopen some facilities, we won't face that level of tragedy. But I know that if it's anywhere near what it was last year, we'll still lose a great many people.
I wanted to thank you and Jericho Road for your work to prevent homelessness and to support people who are experiencing homelessness, to try to get to a better place and stabilize their lives. And I just want to say, I so appreciate having people like yourselves in the community who can provide firsthand insight and perspective on the homeless and what supports and facilities they need to be able to, you know, to make their journey. And because I feel like there's a tremendous amount of, you know, there's all sorts of policy ideas floating around in our community, many of which don't have the benefit of being informed by, you know, direct service provision experience of the population that is the subject of all that, all those policy proposals.
Yes. One of the challenges of being a 501(c)(3) organization is that you're allowed to do educational kinds of things. We can inform, we can let you know what the numbers are and the statistics, but advocacy is not something that we're allowed to do. And so, without a more progressive kind of advocacy, people that are in favor of stuff-- Yes, it's going to be -- it's always been, it's always been a struggle to be able to feel like you can have a significant input beyond letting people like yourselves who set those policies know as closely as we can what the situation is. Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's lobbying and advocacy, that's one thing, and as a 501(c)(3), you are restricted in doing that. And then there's -- then there is responding to inquiries. So, when elected officials actually ask people, ask people for their insights, ask them for their recommendations, it's my understanding that you are fully allowed to respond and provide, you know, provide thoughtful suggestions and recommendations to us. So, you know, I want to commit to constantly being one of those people who is asking, so that you have an opportunity to share your insights, which are so valuable to these policy discussions.
Well, I would like to -- thank you very much, Commissioner, for that. I would like to say that in the history, of my history, and with these commissioners, and former commissioners as well, I've always enjoyed the conversation, the open conversations that we've been able to have. I've never felt like there was a subject that could not be talked about, or, as one of the signers of the Declaration said, "There's nothing so terrible, we can't talk about it." So, yes, I've felt very comfortable in all of our conversations, and I appreciate that very much.
So, I've got a question for you. How many one-pound propane tanks do you guys give out a year?
You know, I -- why do you do these things?
Well--
Okay, now, okay, what I would say is, those, I would say several hundred. But, as you know, there are campers and trailers, et cetera, motorhomes that have much larger
Yep.
tanks. So, we also fill those as well. So, when you ask me how much propane or how many propane, I would say several hundred of those, easily.
Well, it was just pointed out, it's usually a one-way trip for those. That's the problem, you know? They get emptied, and then they get left behind.
And of course, if they're powering something to cook and to heat, they won't last nearly that long. So, yes.
So, John, you did mention that the county was going to be participating in the golf tournament. Are we the title sponsor then?
No, you didn't give me that much money.
Well, that's what I was wondering. I was like, do you have a title sponsor, though?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, well, no, we can, you know, we can give you some free press.
That's true. Well, yeah, if you guys put together teams, that'd be just -- oh, that'd be great.
I'll talk to the golfer in our family. I'm always suggesting that he can go play in some good things.
That's good. And thank you also, Commissioner, for your donation to the shower truck. Should have mentioned that. Should have mentioned that earlier. Thank you.
That's okay. Well, I just was amazed that you actually live in Bend, but you've worked on this program. Have you been with them for this 17 years, or how long have you--
Since 2009. They started in 2005, before they got their 501(c)(3), you know, nonprofit. And so, it was just, at that time, it was a couple of local churches that were aware of a family that had children that needed a place to stay, and that's how it started. And the conversation just grew from there, and it is what it is today because of the need. I mean, it isn't like we made up this stuff and thought it was great to do it. I think there's a lot of people, like the person who's running the shower truck now, Dr. Mark Keener, is a dentist in Redmond, and believe me, he wants to be retired, but he and his wife go out every Friday, and they set that machine up, and they work with people. And that's the kind of dedication that we have in the community. Thank goodness we have people that care enough to be able to give that much time. I don't know if you have on the back of the document, of the annual report, yes, you can see down towards the bottom. It gives you the whole, the total volunteer time, and what that value is in the in-kind is in, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in volunteer time. And Jericho Road is a volunteer organization. So, the vast majority of the money that we bring in goes directly into program. It doesn't go into administration or personnel. It goes directly into program.
Now, isn't the Oregon State minimum wage higher than $1075?
It's supposed to go up, I think, in July.
It's only still at $1075?
I think so.
Really? Okay.
Sorry.
I thought it was higher than that.
Well, if you want to do--
Well, no, I just, you know, we know that, yes, it seems to be higher. No, it's really an amazing group coordination between the entire community.
And we're not alone. You know, there's a lot of other organizations that do fantastic work.
Well, the fact that you kept 92 children and 99 parents--
And look at how much it costs. $130 a person. That's -- I'm sorry, but that's not very much. You could, you know, and that is all through rental assistance, people who are temporarily on the ropes, and we get them through a rough period of time till they get back to a position where they can do things on their own again. It's not a thing that you have to do for years and years, but it's--
It's really a wonderful catch for people that are needy and, you know, so, yeah, $130 a person, that's really outstanding. So--
You get a lot of bang for your buck with an organization like this.
Right, with, and truly with all of your volunteer hours that were $42,000. Yeah, that's very impressive. Well, I'm sure that Commissioner Chang and DePone will want to be playing in the golf tournament. It sounds like a--
Sorry, I'm not really a golfer, but I'll contribute some other way.
Neither am I. But I'll be there. Oh, thank you so much for everything. You guys are great.
If I could ask one more question. So, lest we walk away, excuse me, after hearing about, you know, 400 people living out in the Antler Road area, and maybe 10% or 15% of that subpopulation being, you know, being working, working people who can't afford a place to live, I wouldn't want us to walk away thinking that 10% to 15% applies across the entire homeless population of the county. And I know that you actually have insights on, for example, people who are, you know, who are housing insecure but are not homeless yet, probably have some feel for the population of people who are, you know, not out camping, but, you know, are couch surfing and, you know, finding other, you know, places within the community to, you know, temporarily stay. And could you comment on the kind of the ratio of those people who are, who are working as well?
Well, okay. I think that the people that are the working poor, according to the ALICE report by the United Way, I would say in Redmond right now, 15% of the children that are -- no, excuse me, 20% or more of the people, because the study was done, the last one was done in 2019. At that time, it was over 20% of the people that live in the Redmond area are in financial jeopardy. So, that's working poor. That's flat tire, blown transmission, away from being homeless. According to the Oregon Education, Department of Education, more than 10% of the children that attend the Redmond School District are considered homeless, are considered homeless. And then, of course, more of them are coming from the families that are in financial jeopardy. Couple of disturbing things that we found during COVID. We had a tremendous increase in women who were trying to get away from domestic violence. They preferred living homeless in a car or something to being in that situation. The number of youths that are couch surfing went up considerably. The most significant statistic for Jericho Road is that the majority of the people that we are now serving happen to be 50 or older, so that many more senior citizens are showing up for assistance. And that's concerning, very concerning. A lot of them, of course, have been economically displaced because of increased rents and things like that. Most during COVID, there were some rental, you know, freezes, things like that, which were helpful. The way some owners got around that was that they decided that it would be a good time to remodel, and I'm sorry, we're going to, you know, take off the roof or redo all the floors, and you have to find another place to move. And so, yeah, senior citizens on fixed incomes and the working poor, yeah. They can, they can be helped. I mean, they can be assisted, like Jericho Road, through our rent support, and it doesn't have to be a permanent kind of answer for them. It can be, okay, we can support you for two or three months, and then you get back on your feet, and you're back, you know, and you're taking care of yourselves. Senior citizens is a little bit more of a challenge, I'm afraid. Does that help at all?
Thank you, Don.
I'm leaving now.
No, thank you so--
Thank you for joining us today.
Oh, thank you so much. I do not envy you and your responsibilities.
Okay, we are coming to item number 12. Whitney.
And you know, I have pictures of the three wolves down the road from me on Lower Bridge. It was actually identified as being Jefferson County, but those wolves will travel 30 miles a day. Now, the river otters only travel 18 miles a day, because I've had those at my house, too.
It is never dull, I don't think, at your house, Commissioner.
Never a dull moment. Yeah, I know.
We had a big herd of elk all out there with all the young ones jumping around and running back and forth in the field this morning, so--
Oh, I know.
A little excitement at my house, too.
That was like at Couch Market. The elk were back there the other day. That was quite amazing to see them in April.
Definitely.
I just have neighborhood deer.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's where all the deer are.
Well, on that note, good morning, commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator. I'm here today to talk to the board about Wolf Depredation Advisory Committee. You'll recall, in December, the board heard from ODFNW Assistant Wolf Biologist Jamie Bowles. She came and talked to the board a little bit about wolf activity in the state and the state's wolf conservation and management plan. And so, today's conversation is really a follow-up to that introductory conversation that you had in December. I'll go ahead and walk through the staff report, which just provides a little bit of a refresher on the state grant program that's available for counties to opt into, certainly not a requirement, and not all counties do. But ultimately, staff is seeking direction from the board today about if there is an interest in moving forward and establishing this type of a committee so that the county would be eligible to apply for state grant funding. So, if it's okay with the board, I'll go ahead and walk through the staff report, and happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have along the way, although probably not as informed as Jamie was, if you have any wolf-specific questions today.
Yes, go ahead, Whitney.
Perfect. So, as we discussed briefly in December, the state runs a wolf depredation compensation and financial assistance program, and that's run through ODA. That program provides pass-through grants to counties to establish and implement state, excuse me, county wolf depredation compensation programs. As you'll see in the staff report, currently 17 counties in the state have this type of wolf program or committee, and not all counties with wolf programs or committees will submit to the state for compensation every year. So, we put a copy of historical requests and awards through the program in your packet materials, so you could kind of get a sense of which counties are applying with regularity and the size of awards that those counties are typically receiving. For the 2123 biennium, the program has received a total of $824,000, just over $824,000, and that's available for that two-year period. So, just about $412,000 each year available for statewide grant applications. This, for this biennium, the available funds include a one-time appropriation of $400,000 from the legislature, so it's a little bit of an increase in what's typically been available. Just to give the board a sense of perspective, historically, for the 2021 grant cycle, the program had just over $130,000 in total funds, and the ODA received more than $340,000 in requests. So, there's some demand for these funds by counties that do participate. In terms of timing of the state's cycle, grant application processes open in February, and grant applications are due in March. And I think when we originally discussed this with you in December, we were just learning about the program and kind of in early consideration, and so obviously, we-- about the program and kind of in early consideration, and so obviously we have not submitted any, any applications for funding. If we wanted to pursue funding, one of the requirements would be that we first establish a committee, and the committee would set rates of compensation. So we'd need to have an eligible committee and process and structure set up before we were eligible to apply for grant awards. ODA does mention in the application materials that they do take late submissions for grant funds at the discretion of the agency, and I think that's consistent with what Jamie communicated to you in December, is that if the county, if the Board was supportive of establishing a committee and we got the necessary requirements in place, there's nothing to say that we couldn't submit a grant application to the state outside of their typical process or potentially next year for funding consideration. So coming back to the staff report, just to kind of briefly touch on some of what Jamie shared with you in December, ODFNW, when they originally approached the county, just indicated that they feel that these types of committees can help support the wolf conservation and management plan and really help to minimize wolf livestock conflict, specifically by making funds available for preventative action that landowners may be able to implement to, to look at preventing wolf-related livestock losses. When Jamie was here in December, she shared with the Board that there are currently known wolf packs or areas of consistent wolf activity within the county, although certainly Commissioner Dare has indicated, yeah, some photograph-
Well, I've got the pictures. They're on the county line today.
Yep.
Do they care about the county line?
I mean, they, ODFNW has lots of, lots of records of wolves passing through. They just don't have, kind of, they don't have any documentation or, or evidence to suggest that there's a resident pack yet.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mount Jefferson? No, that's what I've heard, that there is.
I would need to-
It's not in Deschutes County. There's, there's the White River Pack and then, you know, to the-
But they, they will travel thirty miles a day, so it's like, okay, it's not too far away. I know they've been by my house.
And staff has indicated that confirmed sightings of transient and dispersing wolves have increased in recent years, as has throughout eastern Oregon. So in terms of the structure of the state program and what the county would do if the Board wanted to move forward in establishing this type of a committee, the, the next step in our process would be for the Board to direct staff to prepare a resolution for your consideration and possible adoption that would create the committee and associated bylaws. We talked briefly in December about the requirements for this type of committee. Those are outlined in state law. Committees need to include one county commissioner, two members who own or manage livestock, two members who support wolf conservation or coexistence with wolves, and two county business representatives. And there are also some requirements that participating counties contribute an amount of money equal to ten percent of the allowable expenditures necessary to implement the program, and that can be done through staff time and a variety of ways that we could track time to get to that ten percent. Once the committee is established, though, really the next step for the committee would be to establish rates of compensation, so that there's a framework for how residents would make requests to the committee for the committee's consideration to then apply for funding from the state. And so-
Are you talking about, like, the Wallowa?
Yeah, Laura, I want to thank Laura for doing a lot of research just with counties that participate in this program. We have many compensation schedules, but I, we, I selected Wallowa's because it was a nice one-page snapshot, but it would be creating compensation rates similar to what you have in your packet and walking through, kind of, standardizing process for how the county would respond to requests and how the county would believe those requests would be compensated. And so, once those compensation rates were established, we would be eligible to start submitting for funding requests from the state. And as you'll see in the state's history of awards, what's in your packet, those types of requests are typically grouped into three categories, and that's, you know, death or injury, missing, and prevention. And so I think we would likely see applications potentially in the prevention column of this, that type of funding request coming through if the Board were to move forward. But, so as I mentioned at the start of today, staff is just checking back in with the Board, certainly no pressure or obligation to create this committee, but just seeking your direction on if this is something that you'd like to move forward with in terms of staff creating a resolution for your consideration and potential adoption, or if at this time you don't want to move forward with creating a wolf depredation advisory committee. And certainly, we are obviously aware of all of the priorities you have before you now, so could, we could bring this back to you at a later date if you don't feel that you're ready to make a decision either way today, just checking back in.
So Whitney, it looks like most of the money is actually spent on prevention?
It, when we look at twenty, and this has some interesting page breaks, 2021 Grant Awards, yes, it looks like ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars are in that prevention column at the state level with, you know, less money going to missing or, or injured livestock.
So, I guess, you know, in terms of, in terms of how we approach this opportunity, I would, I would consider it, you know, my initial thoughts are, we, we do not have resident wolf packs in Deschutes County yet, but there is substantial, there's substantial wolf pack activity to the north of us and to the south of us, and there are wolves that pass through on a regular basis. So it's, it's a matter of time, in my opinion, before we do have a resident wolf pack in Deschutes County. What that means in terms of potential depredation risks, I, I think is really different here than it is in a place like Wallowa County or, or many of the other counties, you know, Klamath County. We, this is a, you know, a, a lot of, we have a tremendous amount of hobby farm activity here in Deschutes County, which is not somebody running a really big cattle ranch, it's somebody with, you know, maybe one or two cows, horses, llamas, sheep, you know, pigs, you know, other things on, on much smaller acreages. And I don't have a really good understanding of, you know, what wolf activity in a, in a kind of hobby farm landscape looks like versus in a, in a place like, you know, like Wallowa or Grant County. So I, I think, you know, the, the wolves are, the wolves will be here, how much of a risk they pose in that hobby farm landscape, like, I don't actually, I really don't understand. And then, if they do pose the risks, what prevention activities look like in that hobby farm landscape, I don't really understand either. So I, I guess, I, I'd just like to say, I think that there is a potential need for this program, and getting ahead of it and having, you know, you know, and, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a whole lot of avoided suffering and trauma and, and property loss for people. Dogs, you know, in, in a community like this, I would imagine there might be a whole lot of, of, like, risk of people having, you know, dogs lured away and, and killed. But, so, you know, there's, you know, potential wolf presence, uncertain risk, uncertain prevention activities, and I, I guess, for us to proceed, we would, I would want to see us do some homework on what, you know, what, what, living with wolves in a hobby farm landscape looks like.
Okay. Okay, well, I wouldn't actually call the alpaca farm down the road, down Holmes Road, an hobby farm, they have hundreds and hundreds of alpacas. You know, I know that friends that run sheep actually will have dogs there, you know, to protect the sheep, because that's incredibly crucial. But there are, there's some rather, I would say, serious cattle ranchers down the road from me. They have a lot of cows, they don't just have two or three, they've got, you know, they've got quite a few cows, and actually today, driving to town, I couldn't believe it, but there was a whole, there were like at least eight pigs right up above Tumbalo this morning out in a field, and I was like, oh my gosh, brand new to the community. So hadn't seen them before, and, you know, all I know is that we do have the pack that's down at the northern end, or, yeah, the southern end of Jefferson County, and they are, the neighbors that I've talked to down off of Holmes Road have, you know, have been spotting the wolves. So it's, prevention is always excellent.
So one of the thoughts is to maybe take a step of studying this and even reaching out to Crook and Jefferson County, you know, and I think maybe it's a kind of a COIC conversation, just, just because that's our common, you know, group right now. You know, is there an effort going on in Crook or Jefferson? I don't know, I haven't really asked them about it.
They both, they both have committees.
They both do.
So they have committees now?
They have committees, but I don't believe they've, either has submitted for funding. They didn't in twenty-one or twenty-twenty or twenty-nineteen. I'd have to go back, I want to say it's twenty-seventeen, the last time either of them.
So they're established and then, yeah, they'll be available if they want to convene, I guess, is the status then.
And in Crook County, a couple of years back, there was, at least a few years back, there was a, 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 a potential depredation event and that, but on investigation, they, they didn't feel like the evidence was great enough to, to confirm wolf depredation, so that there was no compensation provided. But I, I do believe that, that, you know, that there are counties who put these committees in place to try to, you know, to, to have the committee in place in case there, a depredation happens so that they can have access to those funds. I, I, you know, for us, I, I really do think that there'd be a lot of benefit in prevention activities and, and so we may or may not learn stuff from Crook and Jefferson Counties about that.
Great. Yep, and then just looking back, it looks like twenty-sixteen was the most recent grant request from Crook County, and that was preventative, and Jefferson in twenty-fifteen, and also for prevention-related funding. So Commissioner DeBonne, we're certainly happy to reach out and engage either directly or through COIC or to help support you to do that, to learn more about what this has looked like locally.
Well, and maybe, I, I was just kind of thinking through it, because, I mean, I'm supportive of, of having the conversation, you know, having another thing to do, I guess, is, is, you know, something we need to acknowledge here, ten percent of the allowable expenditures is somebody's time again, so we're going to have a committee talking about this issue. And, you know, I'd like to know more, I guess, is what I'm thinking. So is there a step, I mean, maybe we just put the committee in place and have it start talking, but is there a step for us to get more knowledge about, you know, what are the facts, maybe another powwow with some, or, or even who would want to be on the committee? You know, do we have business representatives and livestock managers that are ready to join us in this? I know the Farm Bureau has shown interest in this, so there, I'm sure there's a few, you know, livestock managers, and there's always conservation people that would be very excited to be involved with something like this. So what does two county business representatives mean and who would like to do that? You know, just thinking through.
And maybe if it's helpful, we could re-engage with ODFNW to help answer some of the questions you had, Commissioner Chang, about what prevention measures look like. We certainly got a highlight of that from staff when we met individually, and I'm recalling flags on fencing being one of the things that sticks out in my mind as an example they gave, but certainly I think they could give us more substance and depth into terms of what that looks like and how it applies locally in our, in our residential setting or rural setting. And then also, we could do some direct outreach to those counties and just follow up with some more background for the Board, if that would be helpful prior to you making a decision.
One of the other really common prevention measures in, in more rural parts of the state are, are elimination of bone piles, I mean, just carcasses of animals, and which I would guess we don't have a whole lot of that in, in Deschutes County, but if we do, then that is certainly a, a major attractant for, for, for wolves. So, yeah, it would be great to learn more about, about what prevention measures mean and, and, you know, I, I won't disagree with Commissioner Dare that there's, that there aren't some working, you know, working-scale ranches in the, in the, in the county, but just not that many.
Well, and then also, you know, getting some, some community visibility on the ODFNW's wolf conservation and management plan, just so people understand it a little bit, because, you know, we see headlines when there's any activity of a wolf depredation, you know, livestock getting killed in the state, or if a wolf is found dead, it's always like a headline. But, you know, understanding what's that wolf conservation and management plan by, by individuals who want to understand it more. Could be an effort that we would do.
So do you have enough direction, Whitney?
I think so. I think we will do some specific outreach to our neighboring counties and see if we can speak with staff about kind of the nature of those committees and their activity and history, and then also reach back out to get some specific information from the state. And we'll provide kind of some, some feedback back probably in writing to the Board and then look to, you know, bring this topic back once you have a chance to digest that and just to make sure if there are any other follow-up questions that we can help to answer that prior to bringing this, this conversation back. Does that sound good?
Excellent.
Okay.
You know, a couple counties, one county I can think of that where there is a pretty substantial hobby farm landscape and they do, they have been dealing with wolves for a couple of years is, is Jackson County. So if they, you know, it's, you know, in terms of vegetation and habitat, it's different than, than here, but in terms of kind of, like, you know, scales of land ownership and, and the kinds of, kinds of livestock raising that are happening, it may be, there may be some lessons to be learned from there.
That's great. And I believe that was one of the counties, you talked to Jackson, didn't you? Maybe? Been a while? Okay. I think we might have contact information there, and if not, we can find it. So definitely, we'll come back to the Board and follow up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I thought maybe I'd get ahold of, like, Morrell County. They spent sixteen thousand dollars on, or allocated sixteen thousand on prevention. So I'll see what they did there. Just, that was one of the worst, of course, Baker had thirty thousand, so.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And we can talk to, some of our Commissioners are actually people that raise cattle.
Great. And, yeah, no, that's great. We'll follow up with you, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
But I was looking through the grant awards for the last few years, and that's where I did not see Crook and Jefferson. That's why I mentioned that, you know, what's the status? But they, they have existing committees, they're just not active in a few years.
Right, at least they have the existing, so great. Thank you.
Todd Nash, the Chair of our Natural Resources Steering Committee at AOC, you know, he's a, he's a rancher who knows a lot about this program. I just, again, I, I don't-
Well, he's actually the President of the Oregon Cattlement, so he's like the perfect person to talk to.
But, but we would want to, we would want to talk to him with the, with the caveat that the, the land ownership, the pattern of land ownership, the pattern of agriculture in Deschutes County is really different than it is in Wallowa County.
Thank you. Laura? There you are, discretionary grant review.
For the record, Laura Skundrick, Administration. As you know, each week, the Board of Commissioners reviews applications submitted to Deschutes County Discretionary Grant Program and makes awards accordingly. So today, the Board will consider requests made for activities to take place beginning or, beginning on or about the fourth quarter of this fiscal year. So we have our spreadsheet here that we, if you'd like, we can just get started with.
Sure, please, Laura.
Before we jump in, can I ask a, a background question? So I look at this list of requests, so, you know, the other list, thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars worth of requests. It seems like that's more than in, in previous cycles that, that I've, I've sat through. Is that, is that accurate, or?
Yes, this is a little bit higher than we typically see.
Yeah. And so just kind of looking at, looking at the funds available, you know, we have, just based on those, those bottom numbers, you know, in, in the remaining column, if we have, you know, less than fifteen thousand dollars available and we have thirty-five thousand dollars worth of requests, there's going, either, we either would want to consider adding- going either, we either would want to consider adding, adding funds, or there's going to have to be a whole lot of no, or, or no, or not that much today. And I just kind of, as I, as I'm looking at this list, I, there's, that's, that is a concern for me and, and, you know, I, I want to ask if we want to, you know, how, how the rest of the Board is thinking about that before we dive in.
Sure, thank you.
So we went through the spreadsheet and we've got, it was at 850,000 was kind of the rolling number at the top and the, maybe we brought it down a little bit or something? So that's the number we would be pulling it out of, I think, correct?
The beginning net working capital for next year, yes, that's, I believe, I'm going to say around seven, 748.
Yeah, okay, 750.
So what we have allocated available is $14,130, and that's actually forty, 39.8% of the requests. So I, you know, I feel okay with that at this time. I mean, some people, you know, it's.
I just wanted, you know, if there's going to be a whole lot of no and a whole lot of not that much, I wanted people to, to understand the, the parameters.
Well, if there's anything you want to pull out that's not funded in the end, we can have a specific discussion about it.
Right.
I'd support that.
Yeah, no, I'm, and I will be, I, I will be scrutinizing things a lot harder than, than I would be if we had either less requests or, you know, the less, a less, a less total of requests or more, more funds to work with.
Sure. And just a reminder, one other option, too, we did allocate additional funding last quarter, as you may remember, to the fundraising portion of these requests. And so with one request for $2,000 and $5,000 remaining in that portion, we do have $3,000 that could be potentially.
Put in, transferred over, right?
If, if the Board would like. So just throwing that out there as an option as well.
Okay. So, well, why don't we do that first?
Would you like to?
Well, that would make sense, wouldn't it? Okay, so if we've only.
Where'd it go? We just found.
If we don't have, if we're only asked for 2,000 for the Bethlehem Inn, so that, that balance could be transferred over, what, it's split equally then, the 3,000, so 1,000 more each person?
Do we want to agree to, to fund Bethlehem Inn's fundraising efforts at 2,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good.
I will add 1,000 here.
Look at that, magic happened right there.
Well, let's do it the best way we can.
That's the easy one.
Perfect, thank you. I'll add Bethlehem Inn here as well. Okay, then that should zero. Perfect. So if we would like to start with Boys and Girls Club of Bend, they're requesting $2,500 to make security upgrades for their downtown Bend location. This is a historic building which does require additional steps when making their upgrades that they're looking at. And they would like to rekey the building, provide remote access for the front door, add interior locks for safety purposes, add two exterior Knox boxes for first responders, and update locks on their external doors with automatic locking mechanisms.
So we already, we already gave them $1,800 for this in the third quarter for safety improvements.
We partially funded this last time.
Not these same safety improvements, but yes, we did give them, make, we did make a, and, you know, when I was looking at this, when I was looking at this, at this list with the hatchet, that was, you know, one of my, one of my considerations is, you know, organizations that we made substantial contributions to in.
I support jumping over that for now.
Recent quarters.
Be coming back to it.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So we'll come back to that one?
Sure. So next up is Building Hope. They are requesting $2,500 for their RV repair and replacement program. They receive RVs as donations and they spend their time and these funds to fix them in order to provide housing for unhoused individuals in the county. And as you'll see in their application materials, they outline out various costs that they may see in doing these repairs. $325 for a small refrigerator, $1,000 for transmission, 150 to replace flooring, costs.
Laura, these are brand new and there's no tax form in, in my file?
I, so I did confirm with Dave that they are in the.
Application?
The registry. Dave, if you'll help me out on the name of that register.
They're registered as a nonprofit, the Oregon Secretary of State.
Thank you.
And they've been doing, they've been doing work for a few years at least.
So shouldn't we, why, I mean, that information, you don't have a way to copy that information and put it in our file then, or not?
I, I'm happy to send that page from the registration. They, I do not have a copy of their 501(c)(3).
Okay. All right. So do you guys have allocation for them?
So I like this. This is a great opportunity. This, as soon as I go see some people in their RVs in different states of repair, I just want to get in there and fix stuff just like this. So, you know, I'm generally supportive of this at, yeah, I mean, a third or so, so $800.
I would also, I would also like to put $800.
Okay, and I will do, I'll do 400.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the City of Sisters. They are requesting $2,500 to support their Sisters Country Vision. This would provide support to the implementation of that vision. The organization helping them with that implementation is Citizens for Community, and they would carry out activities as established in their vision, vision action plan. Their overall goal is to secure at least $10,000 from partners, partners to support this ongoing facilitation for this fiscal year.
I wanted to ask about the history of county support for the Sisters' vision. You know, I, I know that the county has been pretty involved. I, I was curious kind of what, you know, how that support has flowed. My, my impression is that we've done quite a bit of in-kind of, you know, staffing support and, and, you know, engagement and participation in the past. But Nick, I know, you know, some, some, you've been, you've been involved, you've been the person at the table for some of this. Like between the two of you, can you give me some background?
Yes, I will defer to Nick. He has lots more experience with this, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Chang. During the development of the, of the Sisters' vision, we contributed, I think it was from the Community Development Department, $10,000 to help create it as we would with any plan. And we, and because it was a joint plan with, with the city and the county, it was effectively, we were sharing in the consulting costs to create the plan. Shortly after the plan was adopted, we also, Community Development contributed, I think it was another $5,000 to help print the plan and help get the, just as part of, again, completing that part of it. We did contribute significant staffing resources to creating the plan. We had a lot, of course, a lot more staff than the City of Sisters does, did and does in the, in the creation of the plan, so a ton of in-kind. Coming out of that, then, the City of Sisters really then began to pay a COIC to facilitate the vision implementation team. And I don't think that we contributed at that point, for at least the first year or year and a half for the implementation. And so now, now that they're moving away from COIC and moving to C4C, Citizens for Community, there must be different costs associated with that. They also had a, a Resource Assistance for Rural Environment staff member, a RARE program assistant through the University of Oregon's Community Service Center. I think that's what it's still called. But they, they paid both COIC and the RARE participant to help implement the plan initially. And I don't think we paid for any of that. And so now they're in a new framework, moving beyond those two, to hiring C4C. So they, they are requesting funds to help pay those costs. I could be missing something in there, that's what I recall off the top of my head. Perhaps the county provided another grant, but I'm not aware of one.
Thank you. One of the other questions I wanted to ask was, I, I don't feel like we typically see cities ask for these funds. I mean, or the way that the parameters of this program are, are written, are, are government entities even eligible, or is it just 501(c)(3)'s?
Yes, great question. So as a reminder, the eligibility requirements are to be a nonprofit organization or a publicly-funded agency that services populations within Dushut County. And I did confirm with Dave that he believes they would qualify.
I mean, you know, it sounds like the city is, is just planning on passing the money through to Citizens for Community. So, you know, and on a certain level, I'm just kind of wondering why the request didn't come from Citizens for Community, but that's helpful to understand.
You're correct, we don't typically see requests from cities.
And if I could note on the criteria, I think sometimes we use the terms interchangeably, but a, a 501(c)(3) is a different beast than simply a nonprofit. So an entity can be a nonprofit and not have 501(c)(3) status. That's an additional status they obtain through the federal government, which allows donations to be deemed tax exempt. It's, it's, so you can be nonprofit and still not be a 501(c)(3), but you can't be a 501(c)(3) without being a nonprofit.
And you can be a business that doesn't make money, too.
Well.
For a while.
Yeah, not too long though, right? Exactly.
Yeah, don't forget, we have 12 empty businesses down at the south end of town.
Our criteria is nonprofit.
Correct.
And certainly if they have a 501(c)(3), that's the end of it. But like, for instance, this outfit, we were talking about earlier, Building Hope, while we don't have 501(c)(3) status, or at least we haven't been able to confirm that, we were able to confirm they're a, an Oregon nonprofit corporation that's currently active with the Secretary of State, you know, Business Division.
So then by being a corporation, they're going to document this, this donation from us, and annual revenue will show income from Dushut County and how it was spent.
Certainly should be on their reporting.
Which is the intention, yeah.
And I'll just offer, they initially contacted the Community Development Department to ask, can you continue to help us support this joint city-county plan? Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director, asked me, and I said, well, CDD doesn't have the ability to issue grants, only the Board does. And so, and we really haven't entertained a, a request similar to this in the past where it is a service that we were providing to help co-implement the plan, but they're not a granting agency, it's not creating the plan. So this was, it is somewhat new territory.
It's expanding this publicly-funded piece.
Yeah.
But they seem to meet the four corners of that, and that's why we didn't exclude them on a technicality. Certainly it doesn't, you know, force the Board's hand on a policy decision if you want to go there or not. Because it might open the door to, you know, the other cities and water districts and arc districts and library districts and.
One of my other questions was, I mean, I, I do believe that we have a precedent of supporting visioning efforts and, you know, you have a visioning effort, you want to, you want to also support the implementation of that. But, you know, on a, you know, on a separate track, we just received a request from Envision Bend a couple of months ago, and can, can, can someone refresh me on what, what, what we're doing with that request?
Oh, okay, we, we have forwarded that to the Finance Department for the Board to consider that during our budget week next week, or next month, because that is for, I think it's $50,000. It was initially 50 to 75, it's $50,000. So that is slated to be on, before the Budget Committee next month. And I don't recall which program or which area that will be presented, but it's, it's just because of the size of that grant that they're seeking it being significantly larger, if I recall correctly.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, you know, in terms of population, we're talking a city of 100,000 plus people versus a city of, you know, like 3,000.
3,285. It's getting up there.
Yeah. And Whitney's just to confirm.
Proportionally speaking, this is, this is, proportionally speaking, this is, you know, you know, it makes sense that city, that Sisters would ask for 2,500 and a Bend would ask for 50,000. I mean, with that in mind, you know, we could also consider bumping this out to be considered alongside that City of Bend requests. I mean, from, from my perspective, that's kind of more consistent in approach, but I'm also open to, to supporting this here through this, through this format as well.
Commissioner Dare, are you involved in one of the committees, subcommittees, any efforts right now?
Um, yes, I have been. I, I was kind of surprised to see the Sister, City of Sisters on this chart personally. I was like going, okay, it's kind of what Commissioner Chang has said. It seems like, I feel like, you know, there, we help like groups, nonprofits that really truly need help and, you know, perhaps maybe it would be a better spot in our budget, you know, but it's, it's only 2,500. So.
Well, and it's not a risky to, to just put this on the back burner right now, you know, and this is for next fiscal year. They've already got some funding, so, you know, with your comments just now, I don't mind just jumping over this today and, you know, either seeing it come back or having a discussion with whoever. Because it's, you know, it's not that much pressure.
I mean, if we, if we made the grant directly to Citizens for Community, then that's a whole lot of paper pushing that, you know, that could be skipped, transferring the money to the city and then having them transfer the money to Citizens for Community. So I mean, that, that would be another way to approach this.
Yeah, you'd think, why, why, why do they want to be the middleman?
Yeah, wow, you know, why, why do they need to be the middleman?
So maybe if we could pull it today?
Sure. And would the Board like me to follow up with any of that, any of those questions to?
Well, I mean, would we like to consider this alongside the, the Envision Bend request? And in which case would we want to have?
Right, why don't we just put it there and see if it could be, we could skip the middleman?
And have a, have a presentation, do we want to have a presentation as well? Like the, the way that Laura Fritz came in and gave a presentation on Envision Bend?
So one of the things I think of when I see these efforts is, is endorsed by the City Council, so I'm thinking maybe, maybe have a discussion in a joint City Council meeting with the, you know, our, our joint meeting with Sisters City Council. Yeah, but I'm just saying, I don't feel the pressure on this, so just bring it back around at that time.
Right.
May be an opportunity, even knowing that, you know, as I say, I'm kind of neutral on it right now, but just to get more information, understand what the next steps are. Because the application says we've hired staff at C4C and we're partnering with the city, but it's very generic. Okay, well, what's the next action item? You know, are we, because I want to get excited about the next thing there. Hopefully there's a checkoff list of things that are getting done in town. So, you know, just, yeah, put it in context.
We invited them to give us a presentation, then they could give us an update, you know.
Yes, ask for a presentation.
What's in, what's in the vision and what they've been doing to, to implement. I, I, yeah, I'm tracking a couple of the items, and I know that there's some really exciting things that, you know, they are long-term projects that take consistent attention month to month for a number of years to accomplish.
Yeah, so just understanding the priorities currently, it would be great.
And the, would the Board prefer to hear from Sisters, C4C, both have a preference?
Well, the city put the application in, so ask them.
Yeah, so.
Ask them, do they, do they want to come in, or do they want to send C4C in?
Thank you for the clear.
I think it'd be great for them both to be there at least.
And they can either join us at a meeting anytime in the future, just schedule it in, or the next joint meeting.
I think it's a great idea for them to present, because I think they work very closely with the City of Sisters, and we've thought all along about this is really a partnership to create the plan and now implement the plan. And I think it'd be great for the full Board to hear.
Yep.
Kind of where they're at, where they're going, and who's doing what.
Yeah.
Exactly. Great.
Thank you. The next request we have is Clear Alliance. They are requesting $3,000. This would support their counterfeit pill education course, which would educate youth and adults on the dangers of counterfeit pills, which they are seeing an increase in.
Okay, I think I've, I've donated to Clear Alliance every, every quarter, and I thought, okay, I've got to pass them this quarter. And then I looked at the title, counterfeit pills, and I keep reading about kids that take the wrong pill and they, they die, you know. So I'm giving them $500. And I, you know, I'm just like going, oh my gosh. And I, you know, I'm just like going, oh, my gosh. I don't want to read that about Deschutes County kids. I know the other day in our Cannabis Advisory, I was talking about prevention for fentanyl, and they were saying, well, we don't have any here. And I go, but it's everywhere in the country and you just, you know, and as Janice said the other day, she had the fentanyl strips. So, like, why not be prepared? Education.
For me, because we have made investments in Clear Alliance every quarter of FY '22, I would like to pass for this.
I'll do 500, so that'll give them $1,000 to, you know, put some stuff on paper, hopefully. Because I come to the same conclusion, Commissioner Adair. We need to know more about this. And then, as I say, if they have a, you know, a route of getting the words out, you know, we could learn more, so, yeah. Let's just fund them for $1,000 at this time.
That's, that at least helps the program.
Absolutely. Next is the COCC Foundation requesting $2,500 to help prepare students for jobs with electric vehicles. This project would use this funding and matching funds to purchase a used electric vehicle for the COCC Automated Program for students to practice on. They currently only have hybrid vehicles and have to borrow fully electric vehicles for students to work on and help prepare them to enter the workforce and have those skills that are sought after in today's market.
The important word here is jobs. And so I'm at the end of my budget, but I would happy to do 500.
So they're just trying to buy a used electric car, yeah?
Maybe you could, maybe we could donate.
I need a couple more years, and then it'll be available, maybe.
You could have a tax write-off.
You want to just bring your car in to be serviced?
There you go.
All I've had to do is rotate the tires and put a couple, not even probably just one gallon of windshield washer fluid in it, and that's it in two years. It's amazing.
Have them in and just to bring it in.
Just take it apart to see how it works.
Look under the hood and...
Don't worry, we'll put it back together.
Not asking you to do that today.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm, this is a novel request and for, you know, the inquisitive opportunity of understanding what's going on here, I do support it, especially at CUCU, which has a long history of automotive technician technology and industry courses. Yeah, so I'm good for $1,000 there, I guess. I wasn't sure until just now.
Well, it was either donating your car, donating the funds. So just think of the tax write-off you could get.
Well, my point is, I'm hesitant to support schools, because, you know, we were in that situation where every school, every individual teacher could fill out a form here, and it puts us in that spot where all of a sudden we have 5,000 requests. And this is kind of one of those. But just because it's novel and, you know, they're kind of the next leading-edge thing, so.
Yeah, this issue with investing in, you know, classroom projects or curriculum has come up before. And now I've actually been, seen enough cycles to understand that it's a consistent thing. You know, in some ways, when we think about some of the intentions behind the lottery funds and, you know, one of the primary intentions being economic development, I, you know, this is exactly the kind of project I think we should be supporting. I almost feel like, I almost feel like, you know, from an economic development perspective, you know, there could be some value in having like a separate category for education, you know, projects with educational institutions that have a real workforce development, economic development benefit. I mean, you know, some of the projects we've seen from classrooms are cool things, but they don't necessarily have the economic development benefit that, you know, this, you know, I can clearly see the value of this, of this investment, because, you know, the number of electric cars in the fleet out there is growing rapidly in our community, and, you know, this is, we want to, we need mechanics to be able to service those.
Or they don't need service. That's the other thing we've got to figure out here soon.
Unless, when they need service, it's a catastrophic event.
Then it's a recycling effort.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
But I guess, you know, that all goes, just goes to say that I would be, you know, I would support 1,000 now. And I do want to just flag that idea of having, you know, having funds to invest in workforce development, kind of as a separate, you know, like a separate category. You know, the requests that we got from the, the requests that we got from COBA for investment in apprenticeships through ARPA, I mean, that, those kinds of investments, we will continue to need in the future. And we're all beginning to understand that employment in Deschutes County is again below 4%. There are more people working now than there were before COVID, and there's still a massive amount of demand for employees out there. So, you know, being strategic about workforce investments, I think is something that would be valuable for us to think about.
Okay, thank you. Next is a request from Destination Rehab. They're requesting $2,000 to support their adventure group caregivers program. They hold community-based group programs and physical therapy sessions. One of those programs is a six-month-long adventure group, which focuses on building peer support through weekly outings in the community and outdoors. And they are now looking at adding a caregiver-specific track to their adventure group, which would offer four activities for the caregivers of the adventure group participants. So this would include things like education and training opportunities for the caregivers and activities such as ergonomic home and car setup, ergonomics for getting someone off the floor, local fitness options, wellness activities, outdoor activities, and so on.
I'll do 500.
500.
Thank you.
Do we have any idea about how this group interfaces with, overlaps with, coordinates with Oregon Adaptive Sports?
I do not. I'd be happy to do some research after today.
Yeah, I'd like to learn more about that. You know, my primary concern is redundancy. You know, if we have an established organization that works in this space that doesn't need as much fundraising support, then, you know, what does this additional group do that's distinct from that or complementary to that?
Okay.
So I, for now, I'd like to put 250 here and...
Perfect, and I'll do some follow-up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amber's Bunny Rescue. She's requesting $2,000 for the 2022 RHD-V2 vaccine. Last year, there was this disease found in rabbits in Oregon called RHD-V2. It's a fatal disease, and they have been able to access the vaccine for. It is an annual vaccine that needs to, again, be administered this year. So for their 80 rabbits, currently at $36.75 each, which includes microchipping as well, the 2,000 would go toward that total cost.
See if we can get them in the spay and neuter program again. I guess that's for vaccines.
No, this is vaccine, so they're asking for.
I'd like to not invest at this time, probably.
I can, I can pass.
I'd like to continue supporting this organization through the spay and neuter program, but not this project.
The next request.
They should have had like an event for Easter. Let's not just get a new, brand-new bunny, let's get an old bunny. Yeah, like, really, I mean, I'm just thinking about how many pictures I saw of kids with their new bunnies.
Bunny recycling program.
Yeah, so anyway, it's just an idea.
Propane tanks.
Well-loved bunny.
Yes.
The next request is from the Fathers Group for $2,000 to go toward their second annual Juneteenth celebration for Central Oregon. Juneteenth, as you well know, is a federal holiday in the United States, which commemorates the ending of slavery in the US. And the Fathers Group is holding an informative, family-friendly, two-day event, where they will celebrate many of the traditions and celebrations based in the African-American community. So last year was their first year, and they saw strong support from the community, and so they've expanded and are estimating about 10,000 participants this year. So grant funds would support the event's equipment and services, which may include things like handwashing stations, portable toilets, tables, chairs.
I'll do 500.
No investment by me at this time. I'm available to communicate with them. This is just a relationship I need to make.
I'd like to put in 1,000.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Furnish Hope. They are requesting $5,000 for a second towing vehicle. This would help them to gather, warehouse, and deliver the home essentials to families referred to them by 54 social service agencies. These are families transitioning into stable housing after experiencing something traumatic or have suffered a loss and have limited funds to purchase things like furniture or household essentials, such as couches, mattresses, bedding, kitchen, and bath essentials. So they do this for families free of charge.
So did they not do the Veterans Village? I believe they were amazing. They, oh, my gosh, unbelievable. And I just transferred some of my extra money, and I'll do 1,500. I really feel like their program, it's really nice to know that they're available in our community.
I also think that this is an excellent organization. I would like to put 1,000 in here.
1,500 is fine, so they're going to get some money from us this time, 1,500.
Thank you. Next is Lapine Community Kitchen requesting $5,000 to go toward their general operating costs. The kitchen provides lunches each weekday, gives out large pantry boxes twice a week, provides clean seasonal clothing, bedding, and hygiene items, and everything is provided free of charge with no qualifying restrictions.
Look at that track record we got going with them. Every quarter.
Yes.
And a lot of support, yes.
We did last, the year before, this year we haven't.
Well, and then, yeah, this is that situation where now I'm looking at the next few tabs here, and this is it, we're getting down to the dollars here. I'll put 500 there, just to show them support. Oh, that's the wrong column, yep.
I'll do 250.
I know we have made a contribution in quarter one already, was not huge, so I'd like to put 1,000.
Thank you. Next is the Raleigh Project. They're requesting $2,000 for their fixed bend program. This is a 12-month program, which has executed four low-cost spay and neuter and vaccine clinics and bend in the last six months, serving over 300 animals. After the 12 months, they plan to evaluate the needs of the community to see whether they will continue this program. So any funds would go toward equipment, such as surgical instrument packs, breathing monitors, and anesthesia machines.
When is spay, what is the spay and neuter program? When do we do that funding?
Typically in May.
Oh, okay. So can this transfer over to that?
I'm, yeah, I'm happy to move that over to that program.
I mean, I don't know, that just makes sense to me.
You have to see them come in through the spay and neuter.
Sure, great.
Okay. All right.
All right, so next we have the Ronald McDonald House requesting $2,000 for their Meals and Pantry Support Initiative. This was created to support families during the upcoming four-month closing of the Ronald McDonald House. And they are doing renovations there. So families will be relocated, but will continue to receive a place to stay, a full pantry, refrigerator, and freezer, as well as grab-and-go snacks. And since the families will not be in-house during this time, they're looking for some extra support during these several months. They anticipate they'll have about four families during this time.
I was really glad that we could support Ronald McDonald House through an ARPA investment in probably, probably the renovation that is happening that is making the facility unavailable right now. But, you know, I'd like to, I'd like that to be the, you know, from my perspective, to be the primary support for Ronald McDonald House.
I'm just going to generally split the dollars between these last two here for me. So $400 and then $450 for the next one, to put me at zero.
There we go.
I'll do 400 also.
Thank you. All right, and last up here, we have St. Vincent de Paul requesting $2,500 for outdoor living equipment. This would support the camping kits that they provide to unsheltered individuals and families, which include tents, stoves, lanterns, propane, beds, flashlights, among other items.
Oh, here we go. One person, propane bottle, $12. It's right in there. That's where the propane bottles come from.
Those propane canisters don't cost $12.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't know if it's a couple.
It might be a fill of a tank.
I don't know.
I'll do my remaining balance here at 6:30.
Okay.
I know they do a lot of good for the City of Redmond.
I'd like to do 750 here, and then the remainder 500 back up at Boys and Girls Club, which we did support them in, earlier in the fiscal year, but certainly a facility that serves a lot of kids. And I understand that they have ongoing security needs.
All right.
Zero, 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 zero.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Do we have any other items?
I won't be at the board meeting Monday afternoon next week.
Okay, no, okay. All right. Commissioner Chang, do you have any other items?
Let me have some things mentioned. One thing I would mention is, Tuesday, yesterday, we interviewed Northwest Natural and Amoresco for the landfill gas utilization projects. And got a good proposal from them with significant royalties and, you know, also the addition of captured landfill gas to, you know, to our energy system, to have the energy. As time goes on and natural gas and oil and other supply, you know, other fossil fuels become, you know, more geopolitically risky, having, you know, a steady supply, you know, small, small-scale localized supplies of, you know, of these fuels that we use, especially renewable. Renewable versions is a great thing. One of the other concepts that came up, I had to, they went long. The interview was well into an hour and a half when I left, and it was supposed to only be an hour and a half. Whereas well past an hour and a half I left, but it was only supposed to be an hour and a half. One of the other concepts that came up that I think is a really interesting partnership opportunity that we may want to consider at some point is that there's moves afoot in the community to do, to have an anaerobic digester system set up to deal with birdie waste and with, like, I think, you know, heavy liquids and with fats, oils, and greases. And one thought was that if you co-located this anaerobic digester with the, you know, with this landfill methane gas capture project, then the infrastructure... then the infrastructure to scrub the gas before you put it in the pipeline, you could get a twofer out of it. So, but that would, the, both that, those heavy liquids and I, and a significant degree of the fat, oils, and greases, that's a city of Bend issue. So something to explore and consider in, into the future.
A rendering plant.
Yeah, a rendering plant would probably need some way of addressing fat, oil, and grease-type materials as well.
But, yeah, just as I say, keep it on the list of what if, you know. So if there's a private company could co-locate there possibly, you know, it is what it is. It's yellow grease and bone meal, which comes out of that process. But it needs some kind of a heating process, and there's some value out the other end. So I'm just saying, there's opportunities just like the, we were talking about earlier. And they don't usually pencil. That's been the problem, obviously.
I don't think, I don't know if there's that much land out, out in the neighborhood of the landfill that's available.
Well, new vessels, you know, you take, just one of the reference points I was pointing out, a vessel, it's an enclosed vessel, and you just load it, heat it, and the, you know, pressure cook happens. And it's just totally non, you know, non-interactive. It's not, not even interesting. So when it's a closed cycle like that. So I'm just saying, maybe.
With Stevens Road and all the other development, that's the residential development that's happening, happening out there, I suspect that a rendering would be a challenging thing to, to get, to get through land use approval and, you know, and get community support for.
Well, but, I mean, why say no upfront? I mean, a refrigerated truck dropping into an enclosed container that seals, you heat it up, you pull out the different components, and it's, it's a non-event. So, I mean, there's no reason to think it's a bad thing upfront.
I'm not saying no, no upfront. I'm just, I'm just flagging potential concerns.
Yeah, absolutely.
And would encourage you to explore that to the fullest.
We can always do something about an hour out of town.
Can we name it Tony's Rendering Plant? No, I'm not that excited. I'm just pointing out that there's opportunity, maybe.
The other, the other interview is going to happen tomorrow with Cascade Natural Gas and their partners.
Okay, tomorrow. All right. Anything else? Nick, do you have anything? No. Do you have any executives today? None. Okay, all right. Stephanie, do you have anything? No.
Now's your chance.
Stephanie, this is your golden opportunity. Okay, we, we might want to bring back at some point in time the fact that two counties in Oregon did opt out of doing hemp production. And I really, it's, the weather's been so unusual that I haven't really seen any hemp planting in my neighborhood at this time. But I'm hoping we have more hay, because according to what I read, we are going to have the smallest hay production that we've had in decades.
So one note, I know that there's an effort for a Whirl Park Earth Day event or something, this Friday, correct? So, and I, if I could be here, I would, because I'm just acknowledging that, you know, there's a lot of community engagement on that topic. It is a two-to-one vote from, you know, getting us there. The vision is this beautiful little park. Yes, it's a little smaller, but it's not getting rid of a park. It's basically making it more usable. So, you know, that's the intention of what I'm showing. So I just hope, I hope it doesn't get too negative, you know, because we're sure seeing it get a life of its own about the, the pushback. But also, this is an opportunity to kind of show the architectural vision and see if people are like, "Oh, is that what we're talking about?" Because I just have a hunch that some people are responding to thinking the whole thing's going to be blacktop, and that's not what we're talking about. But I don't know, you know, we'll see if it comes around again. So I guess my request is, is there a way to get a large format, kind of that architectural stuff we saw from our board packet a couple of months ago, just to have it available for people to see?
Well, what I, what I asked for out of the design process that I believe has, has started is something a little bit more detailed and which also emphasizes, emphasizes native vegetation more heavily, and also does, you know, makes a little bit more effort to maintain some of the original natural route, rock outcrop feature, kind of on the north end, which, you know, when that design process is done, I think is going to be much more appealing to people than the, than the kind of very landscaped, flat, park, you know, conceptual, like real conceptual drawings that we saw at first.
Yeah, I mean, those are...
We won't have those for a while.
Yep. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing I really want to say about our Whirl Park deliberations is we have, we have, you know, I want to emphasize to people that we have looked at all options that, that, that have been brought forward to us. And in light of our, in light of revelations about our, about escalating capital construction costs for the courthouse and other projects, in light of the 2% wage adjustment that we, that we did first for, uniquely for the Deschutes County Sheriff Employees Association, and, and now to be equitable, we are, we are needing to catch up on with other, the other unions of the county. We are in far less of a strong financial position to be able to do something like a $7.5 million or $8 million multi-story parking structure than we were before. And we still have a need for a certain number of parking spaces to make the courthouse expansion work. So, yeah, I, I...
But then again...
If I'm, if I'm available when people are out there on Friday, I'm happy to go out and talk with them, the same way I, I went out and spoke with people, the, the first, that first event that they, they had out there.
Well, past administrator, Michael Myers, actually gave us his idea where we, we moved all the cars out to the road department and did some solar work out there. And anyway, that, that was one of his suggestions. You might want to talk to Mr. Myers and see what he thought would be a more frugal pathway for our county. So, anyway, but thank you.
I know. Well, a couple notes, though. So I did talk to Mike, and I saw him, he was in the building a week or two ago. And he said that, yes, these, some of these rocks were put here from other excavation, but it was the county's excavation in putting the Mike Meyer building in, which he called the Justice Building at the time. So it's interesting. Because remember, the courthouse where the DA is used to be the offices, you know, in the 50s, when the county really started growing, it was the sheriff's office, the DA, and the courthouse, and the commissioner's office. And then they made that administration building, and now they made this administration building. So there's the history. We've kind of stepped diagonally here. But when that second building was built, that's where these rocks came from. So it was a county project that disposed county boulders on county land. So it wasn't downtown, it wasn't a bypass. So that's what he mentioned. He said, because he got here in 1978, and that's when they did that. So that was interesting, because I thought it was, you know, other entities put rocks there, but it was county putting rocks there, which is fine. And it's kind of landscaped and stacked, you know, very, very operationally. Another note, though, I went to a meeting in downtown Bend, two weeks ago, I think, on Thursday. And I wasn't thinking, so I got my car over here, and I drove about three blocks that way, and then I started driving out looking for a parking spot. I'm like, whoops, I should have just left my car. But I didn't expect it. So people were driving out of the parking structure in downtown, you know, the big one, the Benz, Benz Parks. They were all pulling out very upset, because there was no, everybody drove in, drove the whole thing, no parking spots, and drove out. So, I mean, no matter what we do, there's probably a parking need here just for the downtown commercial activity. Having a more open, accessible, downtown accessible is what I'm referring to, parking area, is valuable. If we had a multiple-story, multi-story parking structure, I don't know that it would be prudent to be publicly available. We'd put probably, you know, some of our county vehicles, the state vehicles there, or whatever, and it wouldn't even be available for the public. So just pointing out another opportunity here.
Well, just for the record, in 2019, we did actually use this on the weekends for downtown parking.
Oh, yeah. Well, and this would help that, is what I'm pointing out.
We probably will be going back to that at some point in time.
So out of all the big things we do, this is the hot topic.
I wonder why. Okay, thank you very much. We're adjourned until next Monday afternoon at 1:00 PM. Thank you, Stephanie.